Okay, good afternoon. We call this regular board meeting for Wednesday, May 7th to order at 4:31 PM.
Director Bankus?
Here.
Director Carey?
Here.
Director Haley?
Here.
Director Jorgensen?
Here.
Director Malpackham?
Here.
Director Nelson?
Here.
Director Artis, out of town and joining us remotely today. Adoption of the agenda. Director Nelson, can you please make the motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I move that the Board of Education adopts the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved on seconded rule call, please. Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Art?
The agenda has been adopted as presented. We do have executive session today for roughly 45 minutes. Director Bankus, can you please make the motion to move into executive session?
I move that the Board of Education convenes into executive session to discuss legal advice per CRS 24-6-402-4B, Particular Matter, Review of Superintendent's Decision to Expel Student A and Individual Students, per CRS 24-6-402-4H, Particular Matter, Review of Superintendent's Decision to Expel Student A.
Second.
Moved on seconded rule call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Art?
The ayes have it, we will enter into executive session and reconvene for the rest of our regular board meeting at approximately 5:30 PM. Thank you. As we move into the moment of silence, on behalf of the entire board, I want to share a few words on the recent loss of a District 11 stalwart, a pillar in our community who meant so much to many of us. For those of you who got to know Lyman Kaiser well, you knew that he was someone special. His brilliance, his wisdom, and his humanity was so readily evident. His commitment and unwavering dedication to District 11 was unmatched and unsurpassed. He was an ordinary man with extraordinary personality and spirit. There was not a stronger advocate for students and public education than Mr. Lyman Kaiser. From 1994 to 2003, Lyman served on the D11 Board of Education in various leadership capacity, including as the president of the board, and he was just beginning. After nearly 10 years of service on the board, he spent the next 20 years volunteering his time and energy on numerous district committees. He was everywhere. His fingerprints are all over every District 11 accomplishment over the last 30 years. Under his watch, several new schools were built. He helped shape just about every current D11 board policy, provided input into the curriculum we use in our schools, guided budget decisions, and was a consistent and strong voice on the District Accountability Committee. He was a reservoir of knowledge, a resident D11 historian, and was the bond that linked various D11 boards and administration. Lyman was a constant presence in our hallways, in our schools, and in the boardroom. On a personal note, I knew Lyman for almost a decade, and along the way leaned on him regularly for his counsel, guidance, and advice. He was always there, a positive voice of encouragement and support. I'll get through this. I can close my eyes and visualize the numerous late-night conversations I had with him, visits to Villagene, which was his favorite place, countless emails and all the handwritten notes, which for the life of me, I could never read as his handwriting was just about illegible to read. But each of those interactions with Lyman made me a better human being. Others would say the same. He was unassuming, humble, no ego, wanted no recognition, always well-prepared and treated everyone with kindness and professionalism. More than anything, he cared. He cared about our students, staff, and schools. The more you interacted with them, the more those qualities rubbed on you. About three weeks back, after his last surgery, I visited with Lyman at the healthcare facility. As always, he wanted an update on the latest happening in District 11, especially the structural issues at Jenkins Middle School, which he took personal as the school was built under his tenure on the board. At the end of our long conversation, his voice was weak, but his spirit was strong. We talked about legacies, reminisced about the past and the work ahead. Maybe he had an inkling that the end was near and wanted some assurance that his lifetime of work made a difference. Lyman, I know that you are listening. You made a difference. You leave behind a positive legacy that will impact current students, staff, and generations to come. Our schools are better off because of your involvement. You leave behind a void that will be impossible to fill. You did good. Rest in peace, dear friend. As we enter into this moment of silence, I request that you keep Lyman's family, especially his daughter Amy Kaiser, in your thoughts and prayers. Just as a matter of information, this from Lyman's daughter. Lyman Kaiser's memorial service is scheduled for Sunday, May 18th at 2:00 PM at the Holy Cross Lutheran Church in Colorado Springs. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance today. It's my honor to introduce students from the Colorado Military Academy who are going to lead us in the presentation of Colors and Pledge of Allegiance. So please remain standing until the color guard exits the stage. Thank you. You made a name, Caesar. So thank you again to the students from the Colorado Military Academy. Later this evening, the board is going to consider the application of Colorado Military Academy to join the D11 portfolio of schools. Thank you, Ms. Roberts from CMA, and everyone at CMA for the presentation of Colors and Pledge of Allegiance. We look forward to engaging with you later this evening. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we got plenty of student awards and recognition, and we have students lined up outside, and as your names are called, please walk up to the front, and parents may also follow them so you can take pictures. Over to you Superintendent, go.
Okay, we've got, this is our last board meeting before students head into the summer, so we have as many as we can that we could get ahold of. I want you to see the stacks of awards and decorations that we have for the parents that are here, for your wonderful children, and for our wonderful students. Please don't just listen for your own student and their accomplishment. I want you in the audience to hear the breadth of opportunities of what students in District 11 are given an opportunity to explore and experience, such that they can deliver on the excellence that they achieve. Go ahead, Melissa.
2025 Pike's Peak Regional Elementary STEM Fair. We're proud to recognize several outstanding students from Edison and Scott Elementary who were recently excelled at the 2025 Pike's Peak Regional Elementary STEM Fair on April 12th at Palmer High School. These students were advanced from their school science fairs and invited to attend the regional STEM Fair to represent their schools. The following students placed in the top awards for their categories. Biological Sciences, Zalea George, first place, 4th grade, Edison Elementary. Evelyn Schmidt, first place, 5th grade, Scott Elementary. Isabella Schultz, 3rd place, 5th grade, Scott Elementary. Consumer Sciences, Elena Depew, 3rd place, 5th grade, Scott Elementary. Engineering, Sophie Ramstead, 2nd place, 4th grade, Scott Elementary. Kinsley White, 3rd place, 5th grade, Scott Elementary. Health and Behavioral Sciences, Peyton Maroud, 1st place, 4th grade, Scott Elementary. Physical Sciences, Adeline Middleton, 2nd place, 4th grade, Scott Elementary. Katie Wetter, 1st place, 5th grade, Scott Elementary. Annika Crusett, 3rd place, 5th grade, Scott Elementary. These students' achievements reflect the talent, curiosity, and scientific promise thriving in our classrooms. Please join me in congratulating them.
Okay, we've asked a couple of our excellent students' STEM award winners here to speak. So please tell people what your name is and tell us a little bit about your project and how it made you feel to be able to get this accomplishment. And I believe I'm starting with Katie from Scott Elementary School. Katie?
My project was called Sweet Stains, and what I did in my project was I tested different fabrics and different candy, see if those candies can dye that fabric. My hypothesis was that Skittles candy was gonna have the best results because it's really high in dye, and cotton was gonna have the best, like, gonna gain the most color because it's very strong and absorbent. Turns out, my hypothesis was only partially correct because the Skittles wasn't the only one that had the good effect on all the fabrics. How this project made me more interested in science was that, just the overall experience. I loved being able to write down my answers and seeing all my results, and now that I know if I'm curious about something, I know I can always test it. Overall, I really enjoyed my experience, and I'm really grateful for what I placed.
Did you get to eat all the things that didn't stain or did stain?
I got to eat the leftovers.[786.12][786.12](Laughter).
Congratulations, Katie. And Annika? Where are you, Annika? Here you go. Come over here.
Hi, I'm Annika. I'm in 5th grade at Scott Elementary. My science fair project was Does Color Matter?, where I tested light and dark-colored balloons to see which would stay afloat longer when filled with the same amount of helium. In doing this project, I learned how to test a question and complete a science experiment, including data, my hypothesis, and how variables affect the project. This project piqued my interest in science by wanting to do more experiments going forward, and once I get into the higher grades, I hope to explore different kinds of sciences. I really enjoyed doing my project, and I'm glad I get to share my experience with you today. Thank you.
Huge round of applause for these budding scientists. Give me five. Great job. Okay, you guys can walk on. Go that way. Awesome, thank you. Way to go. Awesome. There you go. Awesome. I would've thought Skittles would've been the biggest stain or two.
2025 Colorado State Science and Engineering Fair. We're proud to recognize several outstanding students from Palmer High School and North Middle School who recently excelled at the 2025 Colorado State Science and Engineering Fair, held April 3rd through 5th at Colorado State University. Palmer student Natalie Moreau won 1st place in Senior Division Environmental Engineering and placed 5th overall in the state. She earned an invitation to represent Colorado at the prestigious Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair, ISEF, in May, where she'll compete with students from over 75 countries. Additional honors go to Kami Woolkow, 2nd place, Senior Division Micro and Molecular Biology; Emma Barr, 3rd place, Senior Division Earth and Environmental Sciences; Lily Prime, Honorable Mention, Senior Division Physics and Astronomy; Julia Moreau, an 8th grader at North Middle School, 1st place, Junior Division Micro and Molecular Biology. These students first advanced through the Pike's Peak Regional Science and Engineering Fair at UCCS in February and went on to represent our region and district with their excellence. Their achievements reflect the talent, curiosity, and scientific promise thriving in our classrooms. Please join me in congratulating them.
We're gonna have two more speakers. Emma, you wanna tell us a little bit about your project?
So my project was about the effect of temperature on two different species of phytoplankton within the greater context of the effect of climate change on the ecology of the San Francisco Bay, and it was really interesting to learn, to gain a lot of background knowledge about the San Francisco Bay, and then to be able to conduct my own experiment using grant money that Mr. Loman helped me get, and overall, it was just a really valuable experience.
And Natalie, and tell us a little bit about your journey. This is not your first time here.
Yes, do you wanna start with my journey? Okay, so when I was a freshman, my teacher, Mr. Loman, who was running a different science club at the time, really encouraged me to be a part of our science research program that we have at Palmer. And so I started my freshman and sophomore years engineering these devices called wave energy converters in the ocean, which can produce clean electricity. But this year, I wanted to bring my project back here to Colorado because I've been able to see the impact that these projects can have on our local communities. And so I combined my love for engineering and my love for biology into a project on harmful algal blooms. Harmful algal blooms oftentimes occur in our lakes, especially during the summer months, and they are caused by this bacteria called cyanobacteria. So I engineered a device to kill the cyanobacteria with hydrogen peroxide and then collect that dead bacteria with a compound called biochar, which is pretty similar to charcoal. And so, this is my favorite project I've ever done. I really loved combining the engineering and biology. And I'm so grateful to my teachers and my mom, who helped me get to where I am today, and I'm excited to go compete at ISEF next week.
Great, and where's that at?
It's in Columbus, Ohio.
Big round of applause.[1074.73][1074.73](Applause). There are so many more awards to go. Thank you, y'all can exit. It just is incredible. Did you just hear those, like, two hypothesis statements from those two young students? Like, just blow you right out of the water. So if you're worried about what you see on the news, have faith that the next generation's gonna be just okay. They're doing great. Go ahead.
William J. Palmer High School Indoor Percussion. On March 28th and 29th, the William J. Palmer Indoor Percussion Ensemble concluded a very successful season at a two-day state prelims and finals competition at the United States Air Force Academy. In short, the group took 1st place in their division, claiming the percussion program's first-ever state championship. Congratulations.
Test. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Kalen Ward. I'm the director of bands at Palmer High School, and this is a portion of our Indoor Percussion Ensemble that won state this year. Can we give it up for them, please? Because they are awesome.[1194.25][1194.25](Applause). To keep it very brief, the group has had a whole lot of progress. We went from not having a group two years ago to placing 2nd last year and then taking state this year. So a really, really cool growth arc, and it's because of them and their drive and dedication to do so. So just for us, I've got some students that are gonna talk, but for me, I just want to thank Ms. Krista Burke and our admin for being so pro-Palmer performing arts, as well as Mr. Gall and the board for also being so pro-performing arts at Palmer, because that's something that is growing and thriving in our building. So thank you so much.[1230.42][1230.42](Applause).
Hi, guys. My name's Dominic. Thank you for listening to my little excerpt there from our show this season. I guess I'm supposed to talk about how it was this year, and I gotta say, it was amazing. We had so much fun going to competitions all around the state and performing. I gotta say, it was a lot of work to get this gold medal, and it's paid off. I've had so much fun doing this, and I've enjoyed every part of it. This group of people is an amazing ensemble to perform with, and every one of them has a lot to do and a lot to say for this group. So thank you so much.
Great. Jayden.[1269.01][1269.01](Applause).
Hi, I'm Jayden. I don't know what to say, other than I'm very thankful for this group for being welcoming and being very comforting. Thanks to Mr. Ward for making it worth this year, being my last, and just thank you, all of you, not just Mr. Ward.
I wanna give a personal thanks to KC and also to Kim Kincaid. I kept asking them over email, if we won a Drumline Award, we have to have a drum line inside the boardroom. And they kept telling me that, no, the entirety of the drum line can't fit in the boardroom. So I get it that it can't fit, but I totally appreciate that we got to hear the music up here, live and in person, because what you all have done for this recognition takes a lot of practice, a lot of dedication, and these are all more Palmer kids, and so you just saw the Palmer Engineering students before it. So thank you, Casey. Again, you always exceed expectations, so thank you.[1336.33][1336.33](Applause).
Career and Technical Student Organizations, CTSOs. Career and Technical Student Organizations provide students with opportunities to apply what they learn in CTE classrooms to real-world experiences. These organizations help students develop leadership, technical and teamwork skills through competitions, conferences, and community involvement. Students can compete at the district, state, and national levels. District 11 is proud to offer students a wide range of opportunities to engage in this work, and tonight, we are honored to recognize some of our outstanding CTSO students and advisors. DECA, Distributive Education Clubs of America. DECA prepares students for careers in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. Students participate in role plays, case studies, and conferences to strengthen their business and communication skills. Advisors for DECA include Bruce Cole, Sharman Newmeyer, and Andrew Schaefer from Dougherty High School.
So actually, Bruce, why don't you tell us a little bit about what's going on here? And then I'll ask one of the students to speak.
So this is our, from Dougherty, we have two CTS surrounding business. We have DECA, and we have FBLA. The way I always describe it, so people can understand the difference, is DECA is an external side of business, where we're looking at marketing, sales, all those things that are external. FBLA is more internal operations of business. There's a little bit of a crossover, but that's usually the easiest way to define the two. So, and I think, was it Sophia that was going to say something?
Yeah, I think I'm gonna ask our junior ROTC here, because I know they're excellent public speeches. Just you, your grade, what school, and what this has done for you with this opportunity.
Okay, so hi, I'm Erin Manchester, also known as Seaman Manchester, according to your C. I'm a sophomore at Dougherty High School, and what I think DECA has done for me is, I don't know, okay, this is still working. Okay. So I believe DECA has done for me, has shown me how I can effectively work with a group. So when it came to all the competitions I've been before, going to Chicago for FBLA Nationals in 7th grade, Atlanta in 8th grade Nationals, what I noticed was that I never had to work with a team up until now. And for my business operations services research, which I had done for DECA at state, I had to work with my best friend, Christopher Vercelis. I'd like to give him a shout out, he's not here tonight. So when it came to that, I had to learn what it's like to actually work with a team for once. Was not fun at first, but it taught me a lot about teamwork and leadership, which I have effectively used in, and your C. Thank you.
Big round of applause for Dougherty.[1515.71][1515.71](Applause).
FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America. FBLA helps students prepare for careers in business through academic competitions, leadership development, and networking opportunities with professionals across the country. Advisors from Dougherty High School include Bruce Cole, Sharman Newmeyer, and Andrew Schaefer.
Okay, I'm gonna, oh, we got a new, the last guy in gets to talk. You wanna talk about it a little bit? Sure, awesome, here you go. And he's a state champion.
Hi, I'm Dylan Southard. I go to Dougherty High School. I'm a sophomore, and I am the state champion for Microsoft Office Programs and Computer Apps at FBLA this year. FBLA has done a lot for me, from helping me broaden my horizons for what I could possibly do when I grow up, and to teamwork and solution finding, not just in business, but in my everyday life. A large event that I had at FBLA was specifically figuring out how we actually assorted our beds in our hotel room. And what was really eye-opening from that was how easily we got it sorted, because we all were willing to take the worst place in the house, sleeping on the floor, and yet only one of us had to. Every single one of us were fighting for the worst spot, honestly. We all came to the consensus that eventually I should sleep there because I was the smallest and would fit the best.[1625.51][1625.51](Laughter). However, in that process, a lot of valid points were raised, and it really showed me how easy it is to work with one another, when we just open up to each other, listen, and be willing to accept whatever responsibilities are put upon us.
Awesome. Round of applause.[1647.23][1647.23](Applause). They're still sorting out their certificates, but Bruce, you'll be able to take all of them with you, make sure all the kids get them. Great. It's just not as easy as it looks, is it? I'm glad to pass that responsibility off. Thank you. Congratulations again at Dougherty. Nice job. Good job. Good to see you guys. Nice job.
FCCLA, Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. FCCLA focuses on personal growth, leadership development, and career preparation in family consumer sciences. Students compete in events that address real-life issues and career readiness, such as culinary, teach-and-train, entrepreneurship, and fashion and construction. Advisors include Dr. Brittany Hardy, Andrea Aragon, Karen Gay, Stephanie Boone, Rachel Holm, Stephanie Ager, Chris Flemmer, Kelly Gock, Abby Emmerich, and Jana Sagan.
Okay, so today we have the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, representing multiple high schools in D11, and we have a couple students that are gonna speak.
Hi, I am Aleah Alex Valencia. I am a sophomore at Odyssey Early College and Career Options. FCCLA is the Family and Community Career Leaders of America. We are also the District 11 Family and Consumer Science Students. We had the opportunity, this past April, to attend the Student Leadership Conference in Denver, Colorado, to showcase the skills and knowledge that we have learned with our FCS classes.
Hello, my name is Francesco Gallegos. I am a senior at Odyssey. FCCLA originally started as a passing interest, but as I got connected with more mentors and more opportunities, I now see myself reaching out towards those mentors and opportunities, hoping to go past my high school career and help out in the community.
Big round of applause.[1785.01][1785.01](Applause). There you go. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. If you wanna come back as a student, you can. I always misidentify some of our staff. I always misidentify some of our staff members as students, though.
Next, we have HOSA, Future Health Professionals. HOSA empowers future healthcare professionals through competitive events, leadership training, and opportunities to learn about the medical field. Advisor Susan Forjay from Saban Middle School.
Susan, why don't you tell us a little bit about what's going on?
Sure, this is Saban's HOSA team. They are the first HOSA team in the state of Colorado, and they all qualify to go to the International Tournament in Nashville in June. So, I would like them to just say their names, and Lena, if you'd like to say a little bit about what you did.
I'm Lena, I'm an 8th grader here with Saban. For HOSA, we did two different types of groups. We had Dynamic Decisions, which was split into two different groups, 8th graders and 7th graders, and we basically had a problem that we had to do, which required a long-term and a short-term solution, and we had to create a big problem. Afterwards, we had a life-threatening situation, which was with intern on a dummy that had a lot of different, it was like a whole little script that we had, and it was basically what happened to the person. We had to do a 911 call during that, and we had to learn each step of a 911 call and make sure we understand the whole thing.
I'm Justine Gixtad, I'm in 8th grade.
I'm Keegan Whitehouse, I'm in 7th grade.
I am Jason Bell, and I am 7th grade.
And as I asked you all to leave, what just happened a week and a half ago at Saban? It was our big...
Oh, a week and a half ago, yes, our 50th anniversary.
50th anniversary. They don't look 50 to me, but congratulations. All right, we're more than halfway there, folks. We're doing great.
NJROTC Drones, Naval Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps. The NJROTC Drone Program includes students, introduces students to drone piloting and programming, while fostering leadership, discipline, and STEM skills through hands-on drone operation and competitions. Advisor is William Doyle.
All right, Brad, so you get a chance to talk about this, since Erin's already met the group. What year are you at Dougherty?
I'm a junior.
Great, how many years you been in ROTC?
All three years.
All three years. What's your favorite thing about the ROTC detachment?
My favorite thing about being in ROTC is probably the camaraderie that we have, and the fact that everyone on, not only staff, but my teachers pushed me to be a better person and improve my physique as well.
That's awesome. Tell us something that we don't know about drones, that you do know.
Fixing them is extremely difficult when you have very big fingers. Trying to get into the very small corners is almost impossible.
Brand-new program, started in January, qualified for JROTC. Oh, I'm sorry, all right. Brand-new program, I just got there in December. I was hired as the Naval Science Instructor in December, and one of the things I wanted to bring in was drones. So, we got started in January, so from January, from one meet, we qualified for JROTC Nationals and Navy Nationals, which we took them to both. JROTC Nationals was a great experience, they had a lot of fun. Navy Nationals, we qualified second place in our skills and first-place autonomous skills. So, they are just going to the moon, so it was awesome.
Hi guys, so I've already met you. So, I'd like to talk about drones in general. So, I'm the team captain, and this is my first time ever leading a team in general. So, I've led like small, 3, 4-man robotics teams, but this was the first time I ever got to run something with multiple teams, multiple groups, and a lot of different personalities, trust me, that was a big one. But, so, when I was first doing this, I had a team of two people for me. That was me, and I'd like to give a shout-out to my man Romeo Talwater. Might not have been liked very much by the people, but dang, he was amazing for me. So, that led us to getting our first-ever awards, and then we got to go on to these other competitions. I didn't think we'd get this far, honestly, with me in, what's the word for it? Me in charge, there we go. Me in charge, I didn't think we were gonna get that far. That was pretty cool, though. And I think that's about it, honestly. Thank you, guys.
Great job again. Are we gonna see you again?
Yes, we will.
One more time.
Next, we have Pro Start. Pro Start is a two-year culinary and hospitality management program that combines classroom learning with hands-on industry experience. Students compete in culinary and restaurant management challenges at the state and national levels. Advisor Andrea Aragon.
All right, Anthony, I'm gonna let you talk.
Hello, my name's Anthony Brushevsky, and I was a part of the 2024-2025 Odyssey Pro Start Management Team. Our project is, we have to come up with a restaurant concept and display it to judges, and they judge it based off of accuracy to, like, if we could actually open up a restaurant. I'm gonna hand it over to Francesco to talk about the culinary portion.
Hi, excuse me, I've already met y'all. I'm Francesco Gallegos, senior at Odyssey. This is my second year in the Odyssey Pro Start Culinary Team. So, what we do is, there are five people to a team, one manager, four cooks, you have two buns and burners, no running water, no electricity, you have one hour to make a three-course meal, two plates each. And I honestly don't think it could have been done without some of our great mentors, including Ms. Stacy Miller, our principal over at Odyssey, she's fantastic, Ms. Andrea over here, she's our main mentor, and Chris Starkis, I just wanted to give a special thank you.
I'd also like to give a thank you to Jonathan Shankland for helping mentor the management team.
One recognition for them, so the culinary team placed second in the state, our hospitality management team placed fifth in the state, and their combined total got them state runners-up, second place in state, which is a first for us in school history to place in the top three. It's a very competitive competition, so I'm very proud of them, and as I said, very thankful for their mentors. And just another shout-out to our Colorado Restaurant Association, our local Pike's Peak chapter of the Colorado Restaurant Association for all of their support, and look at these fun chef coats, right? Shout-out to Palmer, I know they're out there, I saw them, they, there we are, back in the back, embroidered our lovely chef coats for us, so just thanks, everybody, for their support.
Thank you. Good to see you all again.
RecVex V5 Robotics is a hands-on STEM program where students design, build, and program robots to solve challenges and compete in team-based events. It promotes problem-solving, teamwork, and real-world engineering skills. Advisor Susan Forjay from Saban Middle School.
I've had the chance to be in the room with these kids, and if you want to talk about problem-solving, engineering, what is just so incredible about everything that we do in robotics, is it's not just the engineering. We give the kids a set of rules, and there's room in the rules. And so, if they read for content, they can find ways to actually engineer better than the other team, so it's not just who puts it together better. So, I would love, John, you want to talk a little bit about your team?
So, throughout the years, we went through, throughout the year, we went through a lot of iterating and changing under design, and about like a month ago, we went to our state competition, and it was a really great experience. We met, we met a lot of great teams, a lot of smart people, and yeah.
You guys are a great team and smart people, too. Congratulations. Big round of applause.
SC Square, Colorado Student Leadership Organization that empowers students in alternative cooperative education, ACE programs. Students are provided with a lifelong pathway to graduation, employment, and career development. The Student Leadership Conference includes student workshops and competitive events in all things post-secondary workforce readiness. The advisor is Alexa Green.
Anisha, you want to tell us a little bit about it?
So, for SC Square, we had, went to Denver, to the Arapahoe Community College, and at the community college, we got to do workshops, present for our programs, like if we're gonna go to college or whatever, and then we got to do some job interviews, and it was really nice, I had a great time.
Awesome. Anything else want to share? You want to bring us on? Go ahead.
This year at Palmer, we had eight students attend the student conference for the first time in quite a few years, and all of our students placed, and then we had four that placed in the top three. But it's all things post-secondary workforce readiness, so things like researching college, some of them do event planning, entrepreneurship, but they get to kind of steer direction their presentation goes in, and it's a completely inclusive event, and this was actually the largest competition that ACE has had in the history of the program statewide.
Skills USA. Skills USA connects students with careers in the skilled trades, offering competitions in areas like welding, construction, automotive, and technology. It promotes professionalism, technical skills, and leadership. Advisors include Dawson Snipes, Jeff Newmeyer, Taylor Bedeau, and Joel Keston.
Okay, there was just one, we couldn't mess it up, it was easy to give, and guess who's gonna tell us about their opportunities? Seamus, go ahead.
Thank you. So, in Skills USA, I did the automotive section of it, and we go to a regional competition where we talk about what we, or, like, show what we learned in class and what we were being taught, and then I moved on to the state level of it, did well there, obviously. And yeah, so we're, that's...
What grade are you at Dougherty?
Oh, I'm a senior.
You're a senior, so are you gonna do something with this skill when you graduate?
Yes.
All right, what are you gonna do?
Work in the field.
All right, so if you're paying attention, this kid's ready for hire. Thanks, Seamus, congratulations.
Additional outstanding CTSO students at a fall Board of Education meeting, those who will be competing at the national level over the summer. Now, we would additionally like to recognize two outstanding advisors. Stephanie Ager from Dougherty High School, who received the Colorado FCCLA Outstanding District Consultant Award, and Jana Sagan, FCCLA Advisor at Tesla EOS for starting a new chapter at Tesla and bringing four students to the state conference. Thank you for your excellent work with our students.
Stephanie, tell us a little bit about your program and what it means to work with kids.
Well, I work at Dougherty High School, and I am the FCCLA, one of the FCCLA advisors, but I'm also the district consultant, one of them, for D-11, for Spanish Peaks, and it's just been an amazing career so far, over the last 10 years, in supporting these kids and what these kids do for us and the community, so we're very excited.
So, everything from budding engineers to robotics to culinary arts and to how we're building businesses, this is part of what District 11 is trying to embody. Learning happens in the classroom, and learning is demonstrated also outside of the classroom. So, when you see kids out in the city, there's a good chance they're D-11 kids if they're doing the right stuff. You've seen it here tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Congratulations to all the students. Some of you are going to be competing in the summer as well, so be cautious as you proceed. The next item on the agenda is Potlight, and this is going to be the partnership that District 11 has with the Pike's Peak State College, the Teacher Academy Partnership. I'll hand it over to you, Superintendent Gall, and I also see, I'll let you do the introduction.
Sure, thanks. To the board and to our community, today, District 11, in partnership with Pike's Peak State College, entered into a memorandum of understanding to turn the downtown teachers' campus, for the downtown campus for Pike's Peak State College into a teachers' college. We have both Dr. Lance Bolton, the president of Pike's Peak State College, and our own Annie Friesma here to tell us about it. Why don't you come forward?
Thanks for the opportunity to be here. I was not aware, I was going to be following so many shiny, brilliant, beautiful students tonight, so feels a bit more intimidating than usual to be with you, but you have a lot to be proud of, what a fantastic lineup of students we got to see here, and I was really, really appreciative of getting to be here for this tonight. Well, as Superintendent Gall mentioned, we did sign an agreement tonight and created a formal partnership to create a teachers' academy at our downtown campus in collaboration and partnership with District 11. And the way that we envision this rolling out is that students in District 11's Teacher Cadet Program will be able to begin taking concurrent enrollment classes at Pike's Peak State College at the downtown campus. As they progress through the program, we hope that by the time they graduate from high school, they're employable as paraprofessionals, and then they'll have two more years to go, they can stay in the same program with the same trusted teachers, the same known environment, continue on to a bachelor's degree in education, licensure as a teacher, and come back to Colorado Springs District 11 as teachers to support your school district. I love the curriculum that's being developed around this, has been driven by innovation here at District 11, so we have adapted ourselves to the curriculum and ideas that you have, which include especially experiential learning at every stage of the process. You know, I'll share with you really quickly, when I was at, president of Northeastern Junior College, I started a WNTAC program, and after the first year, we learned something really important, which is that we should have had the students in the WNTAC program climb a tower right away at the beginning of the program and not at the end of the program, because it turned out that didn't work for some of our students. Similarly, this experiential education environment that we'll create with teachers being, with our students being, with your mentor teachers, will give students the opportunity to really understand what it's like to be in a classroom and running a classroom, so we love that. Here's the kicker about the whole program, it's gonna cost students nothing. Concurrent enrollment will take care of their first two years, their second two years, we of course have the District 11 promise, there's also Colorado's Trep program that will allow students to come out of this program licensed teachers with no doubt. And what I love about this is, this is a community solving its own problems. We're not here sitting around looking to folks in Denver to come and solve the teacher shortage problem in Colorado Springs, we're not looking to Washington DC, we're finding the way right here in our own community to solve a serious teacher shortage problem through partnership and collaboration. I want to say, your superintendent, Michael Gall, is a wonder to work with. We get together and things get done, and I love it. So, I look forward to more partnership with you all and with District 11. Thank you for having me.
And good evening, I'm Annie Friesma, Education Pathway Coordinator. I want to start off by also saying thanks to Dr. Bolton and the Pike's Peak staff for this partnership, as well as Superintendent Gall, the Board of Education, and all the D-11 staff that took part in kind of creating this agreement. D-11, as you guys know, we already have some really solid foundational feature teacher prep programs. We have two main pathways, the early childhood pathway and the teacher cadet pathway, and both those pathways right now are taught by D-11 instructors in D-11 schools. They have, they can throw a wide net and get a lot of students into the program and to experience teaching. And once those students have experienced teaching, because the classes include an internship, we've had some students, one that's gonna speak with you tonight, started her internship her sophomore year, and she has, did another internship her junior year, and she's signed up for a third internship her senior year, as well as taking concurrent enrollment classes at the downtown campus. So, this program, again, we have it started in District 11 in our own high schools, so that we can expose a lot of kids to... that we can expose a lot of kids to the teaching profession. If they stay interested, they're passionate about it, we send them down to the Pike's Peak campus downtown to continue on their degree plan. And to, which I'm so excited about, is with the TREP and the promise, they can become, just like Dr. Bolton said, a teacher at little to no cost and come back to our schools and be an employee. So, the pathway, I just wanted to kind of talk about a few numbers. This year, we had the Future Teacher, you know, conference. It was held at UCCS. We had 40 students attend that, and that was just the kids currently in the pathway to learn more about degree plans. We had our first ever Shadow of Teacher Day event, where 70 kids that were not in the pathway got to spend a whole day with D-11 instructors in multiple different schools. And then the 40 students who were in the program, they of course did their semester-long internship, and we were in 25 different D-11 schools. Next year, it looks like we have 100 kids signed up, and I think that's because they were exposed, you know, to the profession in these different opportunities. I also wanted to highlight the TREP program. That is the Colorado Scholarship Program for Future Teachers. We have currently in the program, 11 are in it right now in college. Three are going to graduate, so two are going to go on to UCCS's College of Education as their plans, as they weren't aware of this amazing bachelor's degree coming out of Pike's Peak. One is continuing at Pike's Peak. Eight are going to be second year, and then we have 23 students that have applied and are waiting to hear from the state in May if they get this two-year scholarship. So, 23 students hopefully are going to be in college next year for the Future Teacher Pathway. And then next, I want to turn it over to two of our teacher cadet students to kind of share their experience with you guys, where they've completed their internships and what they've taken from this program. I'm going to start with a Doherty High School student, Bella Loper.
Hello, and thank you all for letting me be here tonight. I wanted to say thanks to the whole board for like letting this opportunity be in the district and to Mr. Bolton for setting up the whole Pike's Peak experience. I am a junior at Doherty, and I got put into teacher cadet my sophomore year as kind of an accident per se. I was supposed to go into Spanish, and I asked what other courses there were, and they mentioned teacher cadet. So, I just said, sure, let's go with it. And then I ended up here. Because I have gotten to do teacher cadet, it's opened up a whole new world of possibilities. I always wanted to do something with kids, but I always wanted to be an occupational therapist. And now seeing all these kids, it made me realize that I am able to work with younger kids, and I just am able to just click with them and be able to help them. My plans for after high school, I want to take up the opportunity at Pike's Peak and work with them to continue my education there and jump into professions in D-11 or just education in general as soon as possible. And due to this being at little to no cost, it's going to help me get a head start and not have to worry so much about the financial issues or more issues that could arise in the future. I wanted to be a teacher. Like when I was younger, I always played teacher games like a normal kid would. But when I was in middle school, I had an amazing principal, and my vice principal is now with the principal at the elementary school I teach at, Scott. And just being able to be around those people again and knowing that they have helped, they just have grown the experience so much and made being a teacher so much more welcoming and understanding and made it be a profession that is able to be loved and liked rather than something that seems scary or pushed away from. Another thing is, is just with all the like specials teachers, so like the PE, music, art, and all of those, it's just shown so much importance in the community with the students. I have gone to go watch them to go to each of the specials at least once, and it's just helped them grow a lot. Like I've watched their writing levels go from barely legible to skyrocketing to the point where I thought it was a fifth grader. And it's just an amazing experience, and I'm glad that I was able to do this.
Thank you, Bella. So, again, Bella's done two years of internship, as well as Amaya. So, I'm going to have Amaya come up from Coronado High School. She's also a teacher cadet, too. So, she's going to share her experience with her two internships and what you've taken away from the program.
Hello, my name is Amaya Wybrand. I'm a senior at Coronado High School, and I've been, I've been a part of the teacher cadet program for two years now. I started last year in my junior year and participated in my first internship. And then this year, I actually took on two internships with a second grade classroom and my kindergarten classroom. So, through this program, I did those two at Halbert Elementary School. And through this program, I've gained just a plethora of skills with working with kids. My teachers taught me how to be patient and kind and learn how to adapt through just a whole series of unexpected events, and that real-world life experience has shaped the way that I do other things in my life. So, I took part of my project from my internship to the FCCLA program and ended up getting to nationals with that. And then through my, through my internship, I work in both of the, both of the classrooms in Halbert Elementary School. So, both of my mentor teachers are actually here today, Ms. Morris and then Ms. Starkey. They are in the back. They've taught me so much this year, and I have signed up for the TREP program for next year to try to get my schooling paid for, to go and be a future educator, trying to fill that gap in, in all of the jobs that we need. I am so excited to be prepared for, for the workforce and to gain all of these skills. It's helped me in my, my job that I do right now. I tutor and I teach little kids about emotional regulation. We've had a whole series of projects that I've been able to do. We've gone and we've toured colleges. I got some of my high schoolers from my school in my environmental science class to come in and teach an interactive STEM lesson with my kindergarteners to work on water conservation and the water cycle to try to get environmental awareness started in our elementary school programs and try to get these kids interested in STEM activities so that we can get more, more kids excited about teaching and more kids excited about STEM.
As Annie comes up, Dwayne, are you here? You need to stand up and be recognized as well. Dwayne Roberson for the work in setting up the teacher cadet program over the last couple of years. They're being shy. We started at less than 10, and then we doubled that, and now we're at 40, and next year, we're targeting 100. And we're now in a partnership with Pike's Peak State College. This is an opportunity to remove barriers for children that want to pursue teaching degrees. Well, Dr. Bolton said it, as did Annie say, and I'll say it again. This partnership with Pike's Peak State College means that if you're in District 11 and you want to be a teacher, you can do that for free. You can go to college and get a four-year degree and a teaching certificate for free. So, write that down, call our counselors, we'll help you figure it out. You know, it'll still be hard because you got to go from the Promise to TREP, but we'll help you figure that out. I just wanted to make sure, Dwayne, you got acknowledgement for the work that you've done as well. Questions to the board, and thank you, Dr. Bolton, for your partnership.
Yeah. I'll reiterate that thank you for the partnership. This is an awesome program with all the teacher shortages that we've had in recent years. This is grow our own pipeline, so we look forward to it. And a couple of proud dads up here, too. I see one there and one at the back, Mr. Wybrand. Thank you for all being here, both questions or comments. Director Nelson.
So, I'm curious, the second two years, you mentioned the first two years are through the D-11 Promise, so then the second two years, what is the funding?
TREP, Teacher Recruitment Education Program.
Oh, the state. Okay. Great.
So, the state will help pay for that.
Way to figure out a way to work that in the D-11.
Two halves equal a whole.
Yeah.
We did our basic math.
Nice work.
But really, it was the work of Pike's Peak State College pursuing a four-year degree, granting opportunity in education that allowed for this opportunity. Lance, you want to talk about that?
If you don't mind, just also add that we expect students to get a lot of their credits in the program through concurrent enrollment. It's really importantly, we want to start students sophomore or junior year starting to take education courses at Pike's Peak while they're in high school, so they'll have a lot of their credits already done by the time they graduate. And we want them to be employable at that point. It's really important for our students to be able to start making a paycheck.
Yeah. Absolutely.
So, first two years through concurrent enrollment, and after they graduate, they can enter the employment workforce while earning the bachelor's degree for the next two years.
Exactly. And that's exactly the kind of scaffolding of credentials that we like to build.
Yep. Thank you.
Great.
Great opportunity for our kids, so for our community as well. If you are listening and you want to go and become a teacher, take advantage of this, and we welcome you back into District 11, too. You can become an.
Yeah, we promised today at the MOU signing that next year, our goal is if you're in this program inside your diploma, will be a conditional letter of employment from District 11.
Great.
So, if you finish the program, we'll hire you back here. It is Teacher Appreciation Week, so we're going to bring as many
We're going to appreciate you.
Great teacher things as possible back to District 11.
I remember when I first joined the school board, Odyssey was one of my schools, and I visited the teacher cadet program, and you kind of explained it all to me. And so, it's really exciting to see it grow and expand, and I love what you said about getting kids exposure to see just as much if they don't enjoy something early on before they spend a lot of time and energy and money towards an endeavor and can get exposure. So, thank you so much for your partnership and very exciting work. Thank you all.
Director Heffley.
I don't have any questions, but I do want to say something to you guys that spoke here. Did, well, I do have a question. Did I hear you say they get their degree for free and they get their teacher certification for free?
I don't know about teacher certification. Do you have to pay for that in the state?
Yeah, it's a scholarship, like from Teach Colorado. I think that covers your test to take the test, and maybe your vice deputy, too.
Man, that is huge, you guys.
But we'll take the tuition as the big win.
I'll take any of it. Coming from a former teacher, Coronado, you guys, teaching is a noble profession. I spent more than half of my life as a teacher, and I'm retired from teaching, still involved in it somehow, right? Doing this, doing this job. Noble profession. If you hit it right, and you will, because you're doing it right, it's a heck of a life. And you're going to get through, and you're going to look, turn around one day, and you're going to be, I don't want to say in your 50s, but you will be someday, and you're going to turn around and you're going to go, where did that time go? But you're going to remember kids that came through your room. You're going to remember their names. You're going to remember their stories. You're going to see them on Facebook. You're going to see them out in the community, and even when you don't remember them, remember them anyway. Do you understand what I'm saying? Fake it till you make it. Okay? Because you're going to get thousands of kids come through your doors, and they're all going to be looking to you. It's a huge responsibility, but one that is so sweet. What a great time teaching is. So, congratulations to you both and the other people that are in the program. Man, what a great decision you guys have made.
Thank you. I don't see any other comments. Congratulations to all of you. And like what Director Heffley said, even if you don't remember the kids and the difference that you make, they will remember you and the difference that you make in their lives. Thank you. Superintendent Gaul, do you have any closing comments?
Nope. Super proud of today. You'll see it on the news. Fox News and KRDO covered it, so.
Thank you, Dr. Bolton. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, Superintendent's report.
If I could get our two teacher cadets to come forward, you're going to sit here and you're going to shout your teachers out.
Go ahead. You have the microphone. Amaya's teachers, can you stand up? Is he still here? You can go.
Awesome. Well, again, I'm Amaya Wybrand, and I'm from Coronado High School. I have my two amazing mentors here. I have Ms. Morris in the green, and then Ms. Katie Starkey. She's in the blue. They've allowed me this year to be part of their classroom and be part of their programs, and they've taught me so much throughout the year. They've gone above and beyond helping me, mentoring me, being flexible when unexpected things happened. They let me come in and do a variety of different things with their students, and I made so many connections this year, and I just appreciate them so much for being flexible and willing to teach little kids and a high schooler throughout the year, and I appreciate them very much.
You love them so much, you want to work with them as soon as you graduate, right?
Yes, I do. I do. I'm going to school to be a teacher, and hopefully I can come back and see them and maybe work in their school.
Is Toby still here? Toby, I'll hire you. Hire her, right, Toby?
Yeah.
Hire her. See, we, we got it. Great job, Amaya.
Then my mentor teacher, as far as I know, she's not here tonight, but it's Ms. Moore. She has known me since sixth grade. She, her kid grew up with me. We've always been close friends, and she just has always helped every single kid in every single way they need, always adjusted everything to what they need, and always made sure that the classroom was amazing. And I just hope that one day I can work with her instead of just alongside her.
Awesome. Great job, though. All right, I'm moving quickly, and I never move quickly, but I know Mahmood's got to go. So, if I can get all the students that we know that are graduating and ascending into the military to come forward, I think we had you queued up here. Can you hear me? There we go. If you don't know, I'm a vet, and I'm a proud Air Force veteran after 25 years. And these young men and women standing before you have elected to serve their country in one form or another immediately after graduation, and that, to me, is worth an extra couple of minutes of a board meeting. So, please, a big round of applause, a short salute, and fair winds and following seas is what our Navy counterparts would say. So, congratulations to you. If you could all introduce yourself and say what it is that you aspire to do in the military and pass the microphone down.
Hello, I am Alora Velazquez Figueroa. I am a senior at Mitchell High School. I plan on going into the Army as a combat medic specialist. I want to save lives.
Hello, I am Arturo Getana. I'm a senior at Mitchell High School, and I'm looking to go into the Air Force and doing aerospace ground equipment as a job.
I'm Victoria Kunkel. I'm a senior at Mitchell High School, and I want to join the Air Force as a mechanical engineer.
Hi, my name is Dana Vargas, and I'm senior at Mitchell High School, and I want to join the Air Force for engineering and aerodynamic.
Hello, I'm Mahmood Maseed, and I'm going to the Air Force Academy. I plan on pursuing medicine as a second lieutenant.
Hi, my name is Paige, and I'm going to UCLA into their nursing program on a Navy ROTC scholarship.
I'm Christina, and I want to do the Air Force for aircraft metal technology.
My name is Joshua Pettigrew. I want to do nuclear engineering for the Navy.
March it out. 10, huh? If you're a mom or dad and you're not sure what your kids want to do, I promise you that the military can give your children both structure and enlistment and great opportunities for officership. Many of those students reached out to me directly in their senior year for council, one of them ending up with an ROTC scholarship and another one ending up at a service academy. So, please, take advantage of the fact that we are a military-rich community. You don't have to come talk to me. Many of our staff members in our schools, in our community, would love to be able to pass on the lineage. If I remember, Mr. Kaiser was also a vet in the great piece that Parth shared earlier. So, again, very proud of those young students, thinking about at 18 years old how ready they are to support and defend the Constitution. Okay, keeping along here, switching gears. I said it before, I'll say it again, a happy Teacher Appreciation Week. I want to thank every teacher. We say all the time in District 11, the number one way to student achievement is to access to high-quality instruction. So, tonight, we're changing that slide. The number one way to student achievement is you. So, if you're listening, please watch us. Please help us know what you need to be better at what you're doing. You are the reason that every one of these students is here tonight to be celebrated. Don't let this just be a week-long of appreciation. Don't let this just be a week-long of appreciation. Continue to partner with the district to find the ways that we can be the premier educational institution on the front range. We're so excited for our teachers. We continue to applaud them. I hope you and the community see the value in their work as well, not just this week, but in every day. I'd also like to continue in that congratulations. There are several different awards that come through our community. The first is our Crystal Apple Award winners. They'll be recognized here in the coming weeks at a reception. You might have seen them on social media in getting their small little, literally, crystal apples, which is a real badge of honor here in District 11. So if you know them, congratulate them and if you don't, get to know them because they're phenomenal educators and we're thankful for them. Also, our Diamond Award winners. This is a similar award, just a different set of sponsors that come through it and these are a little more live-action photos of them being acknowledged in their classroom settings. Matter of fact, I think Ms. Alexa Green was up here earlier with our A students. We should have called her out for that at the time. I'd also like to introduce our newest hire for Stratton Elementary School for next year, Mr. Bill Fallon. Can you come forward and just say a few words at the podium to the board?
Thanks very much, Mr. Gaul. I appreciate you having me here tonight. Thanks again to the board for your commitment to education here in District 11. I want to say some personal thank yous. I know Hillary Hyten was here just a minute ago. She and the team at Doherty brought me into District 11 and I'm very grateful to them for allowing me to join and now I get to transition to a new position, which I'm very excited about. I want to say thank you to the entire interview team, the district folks, the area superintendents and other people who were involved in the process and at the building. If you've never been involved in hiring a new leader at your building, it causes a lot of anxiety and there's a lot of people that have to take a lot of time out of their day and talk to a lot of people and I thought everybody did a fantastic job, so I wanted to express my appreciation to everybody who's been involved in any step of that process. Big thank you to Ms. Scott for bringing me along into the Stratton family and again to Mr. Gaul for really bringing me into the Stratton family. I'm very excited to take over and looking forward to a little bit of a challenge, but also a wonderful opportunity for me and I hope the students and staff and families at Stratton as well. So thank you very much.
Congratulations, Bill. We're super excited to have you. Okay, our weekly update for Jenkins. I was over there just yesterday crawling around with my hard hat on. The demolition to get the repairs is moving very quickly. You can see, I don't want to try and sound like I'm a structural engineer because I'm not, but the picture on the left, they're literally taking out pieces of the floor to relift the wall and then re-secur the wall. So you hear the term "micro pilings" and so inside of each one of those holes, we'll be re-securing that wall to make sure that there's no movement going forward. And then the picture on the right, that's what the media center used to be and that's what it looks like now. It has been, the far west wall has been completely removed. All of that floor is coming up for us to be able to put in a new structural floor. The difference being again that it is, it's not a floating slab, it's a structural slab, so it's not dependent upon the movement of the soil below it. I think the really interesting piece, especially when the community saw the design work that we're doing at Jenkins, is that through line that you see right now looks west. That through line will continue, so when you enter into the heart of a school, which is normally its library or its media center, you'll be able to see the front range in Pike's Peak. That had been cordoned off before, so doing the best that we can in that difficult situation. Again, I certainly am so thankful for all the students, all the staff and all the family for the changes they've had to go through this year. We've put out invites this evening for those that were interested in the Steering Committee to help finalize the interior design for that media center. I know that that had come as a draft idea to the board before and we're working with our staff at Jenkins, both dislocated at Russell and at Doherty, because the actual thing that's holding us back right now from demoing the real challenge in the 7th and 8th grade wing is we still have some teacher items in those classrooms. So we're gonna spend the next two to three weeks getting that cleared out and then demo will start on that structurally-challenged part of the building at the end of May. So we are on time, on budget and it looks great. We'll actually set up some tours for board members if you want to go over there. If you reach out in twos or threes, we'll let you walk through and you'll just see the incredible progress that both CRP Architects and Bryan Construction have brought to the Jenkins product. Super exciting time. And now I believe I'm transitioning over to our Feeding the Adams Family. I think they've all come in in complete uniformed shirts and they have treats and good stories to tell.
Well, this project is called Feeding the Adams Family. Hello, my name is Lucy Sapivi. You may have seen me a couple of times. I'm part of Palmer's Future of Palmer Committee and I've come to a lot of board meetings in middle school and in high school and I'm a sophomore at Palmer.
I'm Natalia Edwards and I'm a sophomore as well.
I'm Mackay Troyer and I'm a junior.
I am Juan Lontano and I am a junior as well.
Okay. This project was inspired by our concerns about student well-being in our district's elementary schools. We focused on Adams Elementary, a feeder school for Palmer, to test our theory, a well-balanced breakfast can positively impact student engagement and overall wellness.
Administrators have noted low academic engagement and an increase in challenging behavior between breakfast and lunch.
Our goal for this project was to collaborate with D11 Food and Nutrition Services to increase breakfast participation by creating an appealing breakfast menu that is satiating as well. We believe this change will decrease challenging behavior as well as increase student engagement.
Okay. Some changes in the menu was before February 4th. The old favorite was French toast, breakfast breads and yogurt with gams. After February 4th, our menu items that were the favorite were sausage and cheese muffins, cheese quesadillas and Greek yogurt with gams. Our challenge with this project was keeping the menu fun and tasty for the kids while introducing options that balance carbs, protein and fat, ensuring kids stay excited about their meals without missing old favorites.
And you may notice, we've passed out some treats. These are called Minecraft muffins. They are kind of banana bread muffins and they have spinach in them. You can't taste the spinach, I promise, but we call them Minecraft muffins to make them a little bit more engaging and enjoyable for the kids because elementary schoolers see something green and they're like, ooh. So yeah, and this is something that we've been experimenting in the kitchen and we hope to implement this into our menu in the near future. All right, and on to results. Throughout this process, we've seen many changes with the behavior of the Adams kids. Here's some data that we have from before this project started and after the project started on February 4th. The first set of data is the breakfast participation and both schools show an increase before the intervention began, higher from Adams on average. After the intervention, both schools decreased. Adams' decrease was less. Adams is 10% above the comparison school. This is a statistically-significant finding and the difference is about 20 breakfasts claimed between Adams and the comparison school. The next point of data is the attendance rate. Before the intervention at Adams, the attendance rates for Adams and the comparison school were similar, showing a decrease with the attendance gap widening. After the intervention, both show an increase, however Adams has closed the gap to within 1% point. And then on to behavior. Both Adams and the comparison schools show an increase in behavior incidents before the change in the breakfast menu. Before, Adams had a higher count of behavior incidences and after, both Adams and the neighboring schools showed parallel trend in behavior incidents. The overall count decreasing in both schools. It will take more research to know for sure if the behavior is based off of the breakfast or a separate intervention happening at the school. This is promising, however, it needs more research. If we continue this project, we will have a better view on whether the breakfast correlates with behavior trends. We took this project to FCCLA, which you heard about earlier. It is a national career and technical student organization, or CTSO, for middle and high school students. It empowers students to apply what they learned in family consumer science classes to real-world challenges and we compete at the district, state and national levels. Juan, Natalia and Mackay got a silver medal at State and then I received a gold medal and I will be competing at Nationals over the summer in Orlando, Florida.
Thank you so, all the people who helped us and guided us during this amazing project.
And we'd also like to give a shout-out to Ms. Jamie Humphrey and Ms. Annie Friesma for all your help. We cannot have done this without you. And also to our teacher, Ms. Boone, who learned alongside us, being a huge support. Your help, passion and dedication to this project is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
This is the last item of my report. I know we've been at it a long time, but if there are any questions for these amazing young students?
Looks like Ms. Boone there has, yeah, there you go. You can show their work.
So that is my project that I will be presenting at the National Conference over the summer.
You fooled me on the spinach. I had two of them and I'm feeling lots of good chocolate, but now I can say I ate some spinach, so it's great.
Six cups of spinach in them.
All right.
Thank you for what you guys are doing, students, taking care of other students and ensuring that our students are better prepared for what they have to do in the classrooms as well. Director Nelson.
You guys are amazing and this is the world I used to live in. You guys, did you know there's a profession that you could enter into, food science and nutrition? That was my background. I worked in product development and came up with new flavors and we had projects where we were trying to figure out how to sneak veggies into the food for the kids and make it more nutritional without scaring them away. And so I am just very excited to hear about your work in this area and you know, one thing that you could think about is different sources of ingredients that, you know, using lentils or quinoa, you know, blending it before you add it into the muffin to add more protein and because along with lowering the sugar or adding vitamins and minerals, protein is such an important part of helping kids not have the sugar, blood sugar changes and that sort of thing. So keep going, you know, experiment at home. I have a journal at home that I am constantly practicing new recipes and experimenting still, even though I'm not in that world anymore, just for fun. So it can be a hobby and just thank you for your concern for the students in our district and for the work that you did in helping to improve our nutrition. So, and thanks for the staff. I mean, man, this is so awesome. If you do this again, invite me.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, thank you guys again for the presentation and thank you for all the help from the staff.
Great job. They were yummy too. They were really good. All right, only 90 minutes. I set a record.
Okay, I'm just passing for a minute for the boardroom to clear out and thank you-
You can stay, but you guys are all-
And thank you Superintendent Gaul for the latest update on Jenkins. Looks like the work is going really on time and we made quite a bit of progress in the past month, it looks like, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, going on to the next, moving on to the next item on the agenda, public comments. We have public comments. So looks like we have several public comments today. Okay, quickly going over the board protocol for public comments. As a reminder, the board welcomes and is very interested in listening to community feedback as it helps us better do our job. Please approach the podium when your name is called. You have three minutes to deliver your remarks. Please monitor the clock that is on display and complete your comments on the allotted time. Board meetings are primarily business meetings for the orderly and efficient conduct of the business of the district. Keeping that in mind, the clear expectation is that your feedback is provided in a civil, professional and courteous manner without resorting to disparaging or defamatory remarks. Students are often in attendance or watching our broadcast. Speakers' remarks therefore should be suitable for an audience that includes minor students, including no use of profanities or obscenities. To adhere to the board policy and accomplish the work already on our agenda, the board will not respond to comments during this time, but I can assure you that your comments will be taken into consideration as we discuss pertinent agenda items. To maintain the flow of the meeting and not have prolonged interruptions, please refrain from clapping. If you want to show support to a speaker, please stand as the speaker is talking or use a silent applause. Lastly, the statements made by the public do not reflect the views of the board or the district. With that, the first public comment, Jamie Smith. Jamie Smith. Are you Jamie Smith? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, educators and fellow community members. My name is Jamie Smith and I'm here tonight because I refuse to stay silent while the district considers turning its back on one of the most fundamental values in public education, equity. I'm also the son of two lifelong public educators. I grew up watching my parents dedicate their lives to students, especially the ones who were too often overlooked. And I learned early on that education isn't just about academics, it's about fairness, it's about dignity and it's about believing in every single child. Let's call this what it is, an attempt to erase our commitment to making sure every student, no matter their background, has a real chance to succeed. We adopted this policy because we knew the truth. Not every child walks into our schools with the same opportunities. Some come hungry, some come from trauma, some face poverty or disabilities that make the path harder before they even open a book. Equity isn't about special treatment, it's about leveling the playing field so that all children have a shot at success. Repealing this policy doesn't make us stronger, it makes us smaller. It makes us less honest about the challenges our kids face and it sends a dangerous message to the students who need our support the most, that they're on their own. We don't fix the system by pretending the playing field is already fair. We fix it by rolling up our sleeves and doing the hard work of making it fair. Public education is not supposed to be a factory line, it's a promise. A promise that whether you grow up on the east side or the west side, whether your parents are millionaires or working two jobs to survive, that you matter. You are worth investing in and your life has value. If we can't stand behind that promise, what are we even doing here? Keep the equity policy, strengthen it and prove that in District 11 that every student still counts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Richard Lopez. Richard Lopez. Thank you.
Good afternoon, board. I am a Military Studies instructor with Colorado Military Academy. I was asked to come here and talk today about the environment at the school and my experience with the school. Just recently retired about a year and a half ago from 23 years of service out of Fort Carson. The transition into becoming a Military Studies instructor and finding myself at Colorado Military Academy really saved myself as a veteran, a lot of stress. The welcoming that they brought in, the training that they allowed me to complete while I was assuming the role and making sure that I can provide the best education to our cadets at Colorado Military Academy has been crucial to me in my transition from active-duty military to teaching in civilian life. I also teach character development and leadership at the school. To speak to the character development and leadership training that goes on within Colorado Military Academy, first you have to understand the demographics of the school. We have the second-largest Civil Air Patrol Cadet Corps in the nation at- We have the second-largest Civil Air Patrol Cadet Corps in the nation at 154 cadets currently. It is a cadet-led program with two military instructors and the leadership of the senior members, who include our commander, that's also the school executive director, Colonel Roberts. Really, what I found in the school and in the cadet program was the same passion I had as a non-commissioned officer and retired first sergeant in the military, is that pouring into the youth and the future of America when it comes to character development and leadership training is, I would say, 200% more satisfying than the job that I did in the military. Because I understand that when we have the aha moments once or twice a week, when one of the youth cadets, students at Colorado Military Academy, it clicks and you see it, and then it spreads. It spreads so fast, and it's so positive within the school. And that's really what I wanted to come here today to portray, is that Colorado Military Academy, their core and where they're going, I think is unmatched. I appreciate your time tonight, and that's all I have to say for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Elisa Mirabell.
My name is Elisa Mirabell. I'm a parent to four students, or cadets, as we refer to our kiddos as CMA, Military Color, Colorado Military Academy, excuse me. CMA has been one of the most positive moves and changes my husband and I have done for our children. Since joining, sorry, they're all so, since joining CMA, my kids have not only excelled in their academics, but also their character and leadership skills have been impressively exemplary. The staff at CMA knows how all children learn different, and they adjust to that child to ensure the child understands the curriculum. In my case, for example, my son, my youngest, he has autism. They're all so, he can read now after 12 years. Yeah, my son looked at me after he read the story, and he's like, "Mami, you can take my teacher, Mr. Harris." That was awesome. They learn science, you name it. They have so many great projects going on. My oldest daughter, she's in eighth grade with Mr. Lopez and everyone else, she's in the cat program. It's excellent, the Civil Air Patrol. They do so many amazing things. So far, she was able to co-pilot an aircraft, she co-piloted a helicopter, she went to the Air Force Academy and helped with the blood drive. Just so many, so many awesome things. And the location of the school helps a lot because having Peterson right behind, that's where they do most of their things when it comes with flying or anything that matters, so it makes it easy to go. And even though right now things are a little challenging, you know, with extracurricular activities, the school still managed to make things happen for the kiddos. Like so far, we made a basketball team, we had a soccer clinic, football cheer, track and field volleyball. We have after-school tutoring, drama, steam drumline, you name it. We tried, even though we don't have much. So there's so much talent that these kids have to offer, and, you know, the CMA staff, they try their best to make it happen for our kiddos. I can go on and on all night and probably cry more, but you don't want that. In conclusion, with all, all that we want is the best for our children, and I believe that us being part of the 11 is going to, you know, make that easier for us and just make it happen more for the kiddos. So, thank you for your time. I skipped half of my thing, I would cry more, so thank you.
Thank you. You can always email the rest of your comments to the board. Mr. Charles Johnson.
Good evening, board and superintendent. My name is Charles Johnson, former student of District 11. I'm here today to ask you, as a board and a district, to rethink about repealing Policy AG, the equity policy. This policy has been in place since 2020. I believe when you see equity, you see the whole child, not just one size fits all. A repeal to this policy will not only be a setback of the progress made over time in this district, but it will affect efficiency going forward. I understand the board's reason for looking at repealing this policy, but I would ask, how will we keep this the foundation of our district strong and what makes us different? We can no longer be complacent in what this would truly affect when it comes to achievement gaps, teacher retention, curriculum, and many others. Let's not break the foundation of what progress has been made in this district. I ask you to vote no on this repeal of this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie Braxton.
Good evening, board. My name is Jamie Braxton. I'm a proud parent of two current cadets at Colorado Military Academy and one graduate who's also in this audience. I'm also a member of El Paso County Sheriff's Office. I love this community. I had a speech in my head of what I was going to say and super excited, however, I feel it went to mush. Hearing everything that District 11 is for is amazing. District 11 is for the kids. District 11 is for the kids. I'm here specifically to talk about my son, Kayden, kind of on top of Ms. Ellie. CMA is a family, so I promised my husband I wouldn't cry, but I'm so passionate about CMA. It just might happen. We have been a family there since 2017, when it opened. Our family PCS from Hawaii, and I'm also a former educator, so it was a panic of, my kids are currently changing schools all the time, how can I get them engrossed and engaged in a school? All three of them went to McCallif, and Kayden, it was that time for him to go to sixth grade, and we found at the Military Academy. The opportunities are endless. If I showed you my phone, I'm sure I have thousands of pictures, I know my mom, proud mom, of the amazing things that Kayden has gotten to do. He's gotten to fly, he's gotten to do the blood drive, the list goes on. Ms. Ellie touched on those, so I'm going to kind of slide by those. My son, Kayden, he is now a junior at Norwich University. His passion has always been to join the Air Force and be an officer. He applied for USAF, and unfortunately, did not get accepted. This brings me to my point of, while CMA has a lot to offer, his package, while almost perfect, of course, I know I'm a mom also, it was missing pieces that District 11 could add to Colorado Military Academy to help further our children, get to their dreams. I am proud to say, however, though, he is, he was accepted to the Air Force ROTC program at Norwich and will have a direct commission to the Air Force in 2027. District 11 is for the kids. CMA would be such an incredible addition to District 11. It's going to be hand-in-hand, hands down. Lastly, I leave you with this. I promise you that if you invite and partner with Colorado Military Academy, you will not go wrong. Thank you, board.
Thank you. Ms. Kristi Davis.
Good evening, board and superintendent Gaul. My name is Kristi Davis, and I am a parent and the chapter chair of Moms for Liberty in El Paso County. First off, I would like to recognize and acknowledge Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you to all the teachers in El Paso County who go into work every day and give their time, skill, and effort into helping our children excel academically. Our trust and partnership with all of you is what will guide our future generations to success, and we are grateful for your dedication. I am here today to urge the board's vote to remove Policy AG, the equity policy. This policy was brought into the district in 2020 and has been a very controversial policy since its conception. There is a huge difference between equitable outcomes and equal opportunities. I praise the six members on this board who understood, understand that all students should be rewarded based on merit and hard work and not on systemic racism. All students should be encouraged to learn and thrive where they are and be given opportunities to grow. Children do not deserve to be judged by their skin color, and D11 deserves the respect, D11 students deserve the respect of their teachers and leaders to see beyond their physical characteristics and be encouraged to reach their goals in highest potential. This can only be done through a loving lens and not by separating students into a racially biased environment, leaving them feeling oppressed and with a victim mentality. DEI is not beneficial to student growth, development, or mental health. Resilience and learning to overcome differences, circumstances, and failures is a key trait to becoming a successful member of society. We might take a lesson from our kids. Kindergartners do not walk into a room and judge people by physical traits. This is a learned behavior and one that should not be taught nor encouraged. We must stop looking at our physical differences and focus on how to help our students achieve at the highest level possible without lowering expectations. And lastly, the equity policy is woven through many other policies in the district. I want to encourage and thank this board for its removal, which will free up your ability to make decisions in a more timely and efficient manner that will benefit all students in D11. The hurdles and barriers created by this policy stifled academic success. Your observance and removal of this barrier is crucial in allowing our staff and students the freedom they truly deserve to excel in a positive and welcoming environment for all students. Thank you for your due diligence, awareness, and leadership to safeguard the students of District 11.
Thank you. Mr. Joseph Shelton.
I wish I could stand here tonight and say good evening, or even thank you for your time, but the truth is, there shouldn't have to be a reason I'm up here, yet there are countless reasons why I must be. I'm sure by now that most of you have already seen the message I sent by email, but since my emails are often met with silence, or in Jason's case, an empty acknowledgement with no real response, I brought my words here to this meeting, where they can't be ignored so easily. Let's start with the staff handbook, a document that should protect employees that now reads more like a list of punishments. It allows termination without cause, it penalizes educators for taking a day off during so-called hot-zone days, even in emergencies. It withholds access to the state's family and medical leave insurance program. It allows for performance-based layoffs, layoffs tied to unclear performance evaluations from the past three years without defined standards, risking inequity and instability. These are not just policies, they are barriers. They punish the very people who hold this district together. If this is your idea of supporting D11 educators, then we are not on the same page. We're not even reading from the same book. And then, there's the letter authored by Jason and signed by five of you. Parth, Jill, Lauren, Sandra, and Thomas, opposing the Kelly Loving Act, which affirms dignity and respect for transgender people. I know what you'll say, we signed as individuals, but the first line of your letter stated that the undersigned represent a coalition of school board members. You're speaking in your official capacity, just own it. You argue the bill would burden schools during custody disputes, yet when I asked how D11 handles such matters under the new name change policy, I was told by Thomas, schools have done it before, they can do it again. So which is it? Are D11 schools capable or just unwilling when it comes to supporting LGBTQ+ students? You say you support all students, but when trans youth ask for protection, you gave them silence. When Jason made a transphobic joke online and hid behind religion, this board led him. And Parth, you enabled that silence to keep your title. We see how that worked out in your city council race. Except for Director Roth, the actions of this board have shown time and time again that politics matter to you more than people. You might notice I didn't address the rest of you as director. That title should be earned through leadership, service, and integrity, and right now, only one of you is living up to it. But know this, if you won't stand for every student, staff member, and community voice, I will. To everyone listening, join me. Let's fight for a district rooted in honesty, equity, and respect. Visit sheltonfordd11.com and help bring the change our community deserves, because you do deserve better than what this board is choosing to give you.
Thank you. Mr. Tom Hess.
Tom Hess, Palmer graduate, D11 homeowner. I've been watching you for all these months, and I want to talk about courage. Talk about courage. It's a highly competitive market in education, right? And so I appreciate the courage you've shown. You've stood up for parents, you've stood up for being closest to the student, and the idea being that parents need to be involved. And that's why 1312 is alarming, and also why there'll be more coming, right, in future sessions. Also, equity is an issue that needs to be addressed. You have the courage to address it. I appreciate that. I am part of the Palmer community. I'm a 1975 graduate of Palmer. I'm on the Alumni Association Board. I'm on the steering committee for the renovation. I am very near a number of schools that I walk by every day. Doherty, Saban, Penrose, Carver. I've got a grandchild in D11, and so I want to congratulate you on the fact that you have the courage to address tough issues. I think everybody here who is speaking, opposition or not, I just love to see the engagement and that you're engaging them. I want to continue to see the courage, the desire for rigor, the desire for an excellent education, high-quality instruction, and that's going to take more courage in this market. You've been facing competition since 1994. There's been school choice for 30 years, and in that market, people can walk. I have a neighbor who keeps walking, looking for the right school. She's a D11 resident, she keeps looking for the opportunity of an undistracted classroom. She's moved her kid twice because she's looking for the opportunity that her kid doesn't get caught up in the discipline issues in her class. So when it comes to equity, we need opportunity. The opportunity for the parents and the kids to engage, and if we don't, they'll walk away. We can make an enemy if we don't include parents in the decision about gender or gender dysphoria. And so I love these people behind me, some will turn their back on me, that's okay. I've spoken before in public, I addressed 550 people one time, stony-faced, because I was engaged in the issues. That's been my history. So 30 seconds, I don't need it, but I want to thank you for your courage, each and every one of you, even those who disagree with me, the courage to speak in a free society. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ashley Winch. Okay. Are you coming with other Freedom Parents as well?
Yes.
Okay. Are you guys collectively talking as a group?
Yes.
Okay, so you will have five minutes.
Three minutes and 40 seconds.
Five minutes. Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Okay. Thank you, board, and thank you.
You can, ready, put the microphone.
Because I'm short.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you, board, and thank you, Superintendent Gaul. I am Ashley Winch, a parent of two current GMP students, and hopefully one future one. In 2020, we were thrilled to enroll our daughter in the gifted magnet program. We were sold on the history of over 60 years of proven success. It has the capacity for accelerated education that cultivates the love of learning by sparking their interests with cross-grade, cross-curriculum, hands-on experiences, experiments, critical thinking. I really could go on. Our daughter had an amazing experience. Unlike most gifted programs, the GMP allowed her to learn all her core subjects with similarly bright students in self-contained classrooms who could progress quickly, dig in their heels with all their curiosity into the subject matter. She experienced the kind of differentiated learning that is a hallmark of gifted education, the kind of education that makes me grateful to be a part of the D11 family. And only D11 provides this kind of programming. It really sets us apart. So as you can imagine, when my son got accepted, we were over the moon. Last year, in his third-grade GMP, he came home excited about school. The hands-on activities, the special projects, the collaborations, the presentations, he made friends with kids from all over the district and others who choisened into this remarkable program. It really meant the kids where they were and allowed them to soar. When the GMP program was moved to Freedom Elementary, we were promised the same program, the same teachers, just a new location. And under the leadership of Principal Rochelle Williams, it's been quietly dismantled. Me and other parents have met with Rochelle, we've met with Darren Joyner and Emily Andrews before coming straight here, because this is how our year has gone. No more special projects and experiments, no more cross-grade, cross-curriculum, made almost impossible by where the classrooms are, there's no more curated curriculum. It felt as if they were being chastised when trying to use creative methods or doing anything that didn't match any other Freedom classroom. As Rochelle likes a homogenous student body, that's not what GMP is about. In fact, they did a coconut mentos experiment outside in the beginning of the year, they loved it, but they got accused of having an extra recess. So no more experiments. The consequences were almost immediate. My son's fourth-grade teacher left. If you knew her, this is shocking. She would have retired from this position. All three of these teachers are highly qualified, gifted teaching, because let's be real, they come with quirks, and they all would have retired from these positions. They have combined decades of gifted teaching experience. They have combined decades of gifted teaching experience. They are all truly passionate about this program. They have excellent test scores in growing the gifted population, and in one year, the coordinator and all three teachers are gone or moved. They would have retired from these positions. The teachers are replaced with teachers who are working to be principals and have no gifted endorsements, as promised to us. They have just worked with Rochelle before and, in her words, are multiple. That word goes against the critical thinking that GMP represents. Many of us parents have stayed, thinking we knew the fifth-grade teacher that would come, and you should know her too. She was spotlighted a couple minutes ago this year. She specifically loves GMP fifth grade, and with no valid reason, she's been removed from the program completely. I'm not alone in my concern. Out of the eight families in my kid's class, seven are upset with me. I know five out of the 15 kids in this class are leaving with certainty, two more most likely, and the two Freedom kids that we got to come into GMP are moving back into general population because they know the fifth-grade teacher, and GMP gave them nothing special this year. My understanding was the move to Freedom was to try and retain more D-11 students, tracing out, tracing into D-20. You can't even keep the students that you do have. We're all leaving. But it can be restored. I'm not asking for different or extravagant or new. I'm simply asking to have the program as it was, as it's promised, under leadership that respects what it offers our gifted students, someone who wants this program and celebrates them. Next year, many of us have already given up in the program. We're not being heard, so my goal is just to bring awareness to the families to come to you, and please keep an eye on this amazing program for the future nerds, because I speak for them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Lori Morrow.
I'm here also to express concern for the future of the GMP program at Freedom Elementary. I've been part of gifted education in District 11 for many years. I've been so proud to be part of a program that only District 11 has, the self-contained classrooms for gifted students. This is an opportunity that can only happen here. I taught in the Gifted Magnet Program at Saban, and I'm currently a gifted resource teacher in elementary schools. I have tried to recruit for the elementary and middle school programs with my students. I've seen the results of students that thrive in this environment. I'm so excited to even say that my own granddaughter is a student at Saban in the GMP program. Well, as you've heard, though, from these concerned parents, there are no more gifted and talented endorsed teachers at Freedom, from three to none. My concern is that we move these programs to grow them, and instead, they're taking away what makes the programs unique. Parents don't want to send their students to a school outside of their area if there's nothing different than in a regular classroom. If there's no requirement to be a GMP teacher than an elementary degree, then what makes this program special? We need to have something unique to offer them. It has a rippling effect, too, because these students feed into the middle schools, and if the parents pull their kids out or they don't apply for the program, what kind of future does it have? The problem seems to be that you put a specialized program in the hands of a principal who didn't want the program and doesn't seem to care if it continues in the tradition that it was meant to be. The gifted facilitator should have the ability to be able to change the program instead of the principals, who are not invested in the programs or don't have experience with this special population. It's happening at homes, too, where some of the qualified personnel are leaving also. So we in gifted education, you know, we care about what's important to gifted learners, and having instructors and teachers who know these type of kids is paramount. Getting your degree in gifted and talented and getting endorsement means something. Having the experience working with gifted kids means something. These people that they took out of the program and replace them with teachers who have nothing to do with gifted education, I don't see how it's going to sustain the program. The GMP program is the pinnacle of all the gifted programs. We should have the most qualified teachers. The students in gifted magnet programs spend most of their time in their classrooms. They're not a pullout. They spend their whole day in this self-contained room. More than anything, they need to have endorsements and teachers. They should have the best that we have to offer. They deserve the best teachers who have gifted backgrounds and are willing to go the extra mile to offer amazing instruction and opportunities. I just hope you're aware of what's going on at Freedom, because it's sad that this amazing program, all these parents are going to leave because there's nothing special, and they're being replaced, the teachers, with people don't have experience in gifted. And this is our greatest thing that we have in District 11. You're a gifted guy, you know. I mean, we care about these kids. They're great scores, they're great people, and they deserve this great education, and it's just so sad what's happened in one year from Fremont to Freedom. So anyway, I hope that you guys will look into this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Sharon Simpson-God.
Good evening, Mr. Gull, Dr. Mel Packham, and members of the board. I appreciate the time to speak and your attention. As I watch and listen to your interactions with each other and with the greater and smaller communities of District 11, I am compelled to address what I see and hear. In a recent session, we were treated to the story of a teacher who said, as it was reported, "I didn't lose anything," followed by the statement, "We didn't lie." Christians, of which I am one, aren't discriminated against, as some are attempting to indoctrinate us to believe. In Christianity, a falsehood can be total or partial. Some teachers might think that they lost nothing through the handbook model. However, most teachers would say that they have lost their agency, their advocacy, and their freedom, to name a few things. A purported 10% raise was proudly announced. Really? All of the accountants with whom I have spoken, sorry, call it an overall 4% raise, which is sustained, and a 6% spread over two one-time bonuses. In another session, we heard an interesting exchange in which one member stated that as board members, we should create policies that reflect their beliefs, rather than being controlled by liberal ideology. Well, that's a dangerous and potentially harmful perspective that you are putting forth under the guise of parents' rights and political ideology, because there are Republicans, Democrats, and independents who agree with your thoughts and equally those who disagree with them. I'm a parent and a bonus grandparent. Here is a letter that one of my parents wrote to a government official in response to "despicable, hurtful, and exclusionary action taken by an employee inflicting intentional harm on two out of more than 100 people at a public venue." If you have not heard the pain that some people suffer because of limited, ill-informed, and self-focused views of others, you would do well to pause, lower the false flag that's been hoisted, and care for the young lives, the students, that you are charged to protect through your policies. I don't know if any of you on the dais has ever helped to save the life of one child from a dangerous, unknown-to-you, dangerous parent, but I have more than once. The 1% matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Asa Torres Mestes. Thank you. I apologize if I got your name wrong, pronounced it wrong. Introduce yourself.
Good evening, Superintendent Gull. I'm Dr. Mel Packham and the rest of the board. I am a current student at Colorado School of Mines and a graduate two years ago of Colorado Military Academy, and I wanted to speak on how amazing of a school this is and all the opportunities I've been given so far, and how many more opportunities we can get being part of District 11 and being under your guide. We have worked on getting sports and other opportunities in the school, and it's difficult. We have done it somewhat in the past, but it would be so much easier to get students the properties they need, the opportunities to actually get into sports and then be able to put that on their resume, to get into positions and get into activities like the academy, the service academies. So being able to bring forth these opportunities, add on to the opportunities that Civil Air Patrol already gives us, would be outstanding. And I speak on behalf of Colorado Military Academy as a leader of 150 students, that it is an outstanding opportunity to be part of Colorado Military Academy and be part of Civil Air Patrol and any other programs we decide to pick up in the future, and how much it has improved and changed over the seven years we've been open so far since 2018. So I would really advise everybody to really look into Colorado Military Academy and really focus on accepting Colorado Military Academy into District 11 and provide all these opportunities to these students who want to go forth and provide service, whether it's to the community, state, or the nation. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Amber Hardy.
My name is Amber Hardy. I know some of you, and some of you may know me because I have a loud opinion. I'm a single parent of twins, and they've been students at District 11 since kindergarten. We are survivors of domestic violence. When my twins were just two years old, I left with nothing but the clothes on my back. That trauma has deeply affected them, and they've spent years working through the healing process. If it weren't for Penrose Elementary, my children wouldn't be who they are today. The incredible staff, Ms. Schoolmaster, Ms. Carrie Bab, Mr. McGregor, Mr. Hunt, and so many others, recognize that without social and emotional support, meaningful learning would be nearly impossible. They created a safe, nurturing environment filled with caring adults. They helped my children learn not only academics, but how to advocate for themselves and feel secure. Upon transition to middle school, one of my twins had a very different experience. Despite everything I tried to ease the change, it was a difficult and harmful year for him. At the beginning of the year, Ms. Schoolmaster even came, the Penrose principal, came to meet with the Jenkins principal and the counseling staff to offer insight into how she had successfully built rapport with my son. Still, he struggled in a punitive and often uninformed environment, leading to academic decline and emotional regression. That year ended in a suspension that introduced my 11-year-old to the criminal justice system. During the manifestation determination meeting, the school decided that his behavior was not a manifestation of his disability, and he was given a ticket by the school resource officer. We appealed that decision, and we won, but the ticket still stood. My child, at just 11, appeared before a judge, standing in line with adults. He successfully completed probation, but he never should have been there in the first place. I removed my son from Jenkins, and he now attends Mann Middle School. The change has been dramatic. There is a stark contrast between who he was at Jenkins and who he is now. You can see it in the pictures taken from each of those times. At Mann, he hasn't been suspended one time. He is surrounded by an incredible team, Ms. Lorton, his science teacher, Ms. Lindeman, Ms. Parker, Mr. Dobbins, Mr. Arrington, and Ms. Rodriguez at the front office. He feels safe, and he uses the skills he's learned, and he's thriving. It can and should be like this at every school district in District 11. Imagine if every educator in this district felt safe, supported, and empowered to reach their full potential in serving our children. What would that look like? It doesn't look like what you're doing now. Thank you.
Thank you. Dustin Franton. Dustin, thank you.
I feel the Grim Reaper appears right now. Thank you, Board, for having me.
Pull the microphone up to you.
I'm sorry. Thank you for having me here today. I honestly don't know where to begin. I've delayed this for about five months because I don't really know what to say. You've seen my emails before. Nothing ever got resolved. No one ever cared. Dority let my child fail. She had an IEP first quarter, no goals were met, nothing changed. Second quarter, I intervened. I tried to get them to understand what was going on. They just appeased me. Eventually, they started ignoring me and couldn't stand that I was even around. Before that, I was helping my oldest daughter at Saban. We actually spearheaded the watchdogs program there back in 2022. We already had it, but we got it going there. We held a big little party for everybody. We got, I don't know, 10, 15 parents on board, and none of them stayed because it was an absolute disaster of a school. The main security guard is my neighbor, and he's an amazing person, his family. He is the one that actually wanted me to keep staying. I met a bunch of those teachers. Three of the best left before Christmas of our first year there. I pulled her out of there. We finished up her middle school in Jenkins, which was great, unlike someone had mentioned, because there was no gray area. I should preface this, I suppose, that all four of my daughters were adopted from foster care. So I know trauma. I know where it comes from. I know all about their experiences. We went through a divorce four years ago, and so I'm single-handedly doing most of this with my children. My oldest, I have 100% custody of, and it's been exhausting working with you and the district and the teachers and the admin, the principals, who are supposed to be helping. But then, when I come in and present things like, oh, we're going to give her honor roll, really? Because she just had lower grades last quarter? How is this possible? I find out they exempted the work. I saw six doctor tags here. Did you guys get your doctorates because they exempted your work for you to boost your scores? Of course not. I don't have scrubs on because my people took away my bad scores to get me in where I am. I was hired into Duke University right for my internship, even when they surpassed the overachievers. So I know hard work. I do more than anything. I wanted to also add for the culinary stuff, I fully support changing the food of the kids that are eating. Frozen peas, frozen strawberries, cinnamon rolls for breakfast, some expired milk. This is at Penrose. Letting kids just have unattended scores, letting them just not do their work. My middle schooler is 13 assignments behind. I just found out because I finally went through her thing.
Thank you.
Yep, I've done it. Five seconds.
Thank you, sir.
Went through her schoology, and the school didn't even know.
Thank you.
You guys needed to figure out how to do better.
Okay. Thank you. So that's the end of public comments. Thank you for being here this evening and sharing your thoughts. We appreciate your feedback. If you checked the box asking for a district administrator to contact you, someone from administration will follow up. Thank you. Okay, moving on to special reports. The first item under special reports is employee handbook. Superintendent Gull, I'm going to turn it over to you first.
Yeah, Dr. Comfort and Chief Hotmer. Come to the podium.
Good evening, Board. This agenda item returns this evening. We talked about it last week, letting you know that it is now in a final draft form. It is going to go into a publication mode next, which is where we'll clean up any of the grammatical errors or mechanics, but we just wanted to bring the agenda back tonight as we brought it to you last week to ask if there were any additional questions before we get it into that final mode.
Okay. Board, opening it up for questions. And Ms. Olson, could you let me know if Director Roth has any questions as well, because I cannot see her on the screen up here? Any questions or comments by the board at this time? Director Jorgensen, you're up first.
Do we have that PDF that was sent out by Ms. Harris today? Let me pull that up real quick.
Which one are you talking about? Oh, Ms. Weiss?
Yeah, I can share it here. I don't know if I have HDMI in here. Can you grab my HDMI port? Or do you have it, Melissa?
I'll get it to Melissa.
Okay. I'm happy to share it if you'd like. I don't know what port I am. Anyway, while I pull that up, I'll just... I just figured we should clear the elephant in the room if that's what we need to do because we want to make sure there's factual information.
Want to pull it up to the lower section, the claim part of it? Yeah, the middle of the page, if you can. Yeah, the, uh, yeah, the middle of the page, if you can. Yeah, that's good, but you just need to go to the top of the page where it started.
Anyway, these were, these are
Yeah, there you go.
These have been circulating.
Right in the middle of at will employment, right there.
Yeah. So I, I mean, I just, right here at the direction of the Board, which is us, the Employee Engagement Group, the EEG, uh, we've been working this whole spring to keep the things the same or better, as we talked about. We've met that requirement and gone beyond that. So some of the claims that you're hearing tonight, uh, even from public comment, uh, if you just want to scroll down, everything that we've done here and that has been worked within EEG has aligned to what's existing with our policy, what's existing with state law, and what was existing in the MA that we said we would not change or would get better. So the at-will employment undermines job security. We are aligned with our D11 policy that has not been changed in this process and with state law. The negative leave deductions and harsh during crises. We have the sick leave bank and the different payment plans that is flexible and, uh, helpful in helping staff who might have negative balances. The hot zone was mentioned earlier tonight. We have times, as, as a teacher, you've got four teachers on this board. There are times when you know at the holiday or three-day weekend, like, I know I'll get in trouble if I take that Friday off before the three-day weekend because my kids are counting on me, because subs aren't going to be there, and because I'm going to stress my fellow teachers out for covering for me. So that was in the MA. We kept it here to make sure that teachers spread the load and have the responsibility to help each other. Uh, go ahead and scroll down. Uh, vacation carryover, that's existed in past handbooks and in the, in moving forward. The donated sick leave, uh, you're lucky you have a sick leave. I had to apply with sick days to it in D2 when I taught, and some districts don't even have it. So the fact that we've kept that and made it better, or at least have it still moving forward, is perfect. Performance-based layoffs, there, the language of this in the MA, uh, and we've kept a lot of that. We are obviously going to work with, you know, hopefully, uh, folks that want to retire or are moving, um, or are changing schools. But if we do have to have layoffs that occur, we're going to use data to help make those decisions. This is like any other job. If we've got 10 employees in the sporting department at Walmart, and we've only got a budget for seven of them, I'm going to look to the data of that manager that says, who's the best seven to keep? This is not, this is not out of the normal for employers to do. Uh, scroll down here. Opting out of family, if, I don't know where it is, somebody in, maybe Dr. X has a record of it. We talked about this as a board piece. We specifically chose, as a board, while the MA was in place, to opt out of the family leave provision because it was not as beneficial as the robust benefits we offer as a board already. So that's not something you've lost. We've actually made it better by not participating in family for our district. Uh, let's see. Well, there's your bottom line. Uh, it is so frustrating to have to fight the misinformation, the rumors, and the just misconstrued pieces of information about how we are trying to help our staff. We are a district that is pursuing excellence. It is a train that's moving forward. If you want to stay in mediocrity, and if you want to hold on to the old ways of doing things that are no longer effective for children, as we saw data last week, we are pushing for high achievement and for high-quality student engagement. And if that's not your MO anymore, we are going to help you, or we're going to help find somebody else to do it. And that's not being mean. It's not being judgmental. It's the fact that these kids have 12 years with us, if we, if their parents give us that. And we have to use that opportunity and time to be engaged with them, to curb behavior immediately, which we're still working on. I realize it's a concern, uh, and to, and to help our students achieve what they need while they're with us. So that's the bottom line. I don't know if this was going to be talked, uh, discussed tonight, but I've just been hearing it in all around, and I just, let's get it out in the open, and here's what we're dealing with, and, and I appreciate all the work of the EEG and the ongoing work they're going to have. This is not over and done. It's not a one-time thing, and here's your employee handbook for the rest of your life. It's ongoing, and we're going to keep working to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our staff and our team members across the district.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time from the Board and Director Art? Is she good? Okay. Thank you. So just to frame some of this conversation, and we heard, uh, some community feedback as well, and Director Jorgensen addressed some of those concerns. For the community, when the Board in December decided not to renew the master agreement, we made certain promises, and every promise that we made has been kept. Would that be an appropriate statement to make?
That is, that is correct.
That's the directive that the Board gave during the formation of the Employee Engagement Group. And we fully understand that change is hard, and change brings speculation, anxiety, and all of which fuels misinformation and unwarranted rumor. So I'm glad that, um, we are, uh, Director Jorgensen, through that communication that you put out there, the letter, we are getting the record straight. We just want the facts in the interest of accuracy and transparency, as opposed to, uh, invent those rumors and speculations and misinformation. Employee handbook was also put together with input from the Employee Engagement Group, comprised of representatives of all three employee groups, including the Teachers Union, CSEA. It was a collaborative effort. The updated employee handbook, again, is not a shift in direction. It is a clear articulation of the same policies and protections that have long existed in District 11. Every with prior handbooks, they agree to establish district practices. There are new practices or penalties, only strength and support. Would that be inappropriate? Employee handbook, nothing new is in there that was not there in the master agreement.
Uh, no, that's correct, President Malpakum. I appreciate the clarity of, uh, Director Jorgensen. I did want to say a few of the, because there's two phrases in there, stays the same or get better. So I do want to highlight a few of the, few get better parts of the employee handbook. Um, our crisis leave, uh, program, which has only been offered to teachers, is now offered to all employees in the employee handbook. Donated sick leave, which has historically only been for, um, non-transition year teachers, is now offered to transition employees. And the extended domestic violence leave, which had only been an ESP program, is now available to all employees. So just as, um, some examples of benefits that have actually extended to other parts of our organization.
And the Board promised fair, transparent, and supportive working conditions, and the employee handbook delivered on that promise as well. And, um, there was another comment made about the employee compensation for this upcoming year. Surrounding school districts, when you look at it, they are struggling to even give a 2% pay raise. We are giving 4% recurring pay raise and a 6% one-time bonus. There was nothing, um, that was secretive about it. We, uh, provided that information, um, transparently in the first communication that came out. That is the offer that is on the table. We wish we can give, um, all recurring compensation, but due to budget challenges of past several years. And due to the tight budget here from the state, we are not getting new monies. All the new money that we are getting is going directly into teacher compensation. We are into supporting our teachers. The Board has clearly indicated that our priority is moving dollars closest to students in the classroom and supporting our teaching staff and building staff. And that comes at a certain cost, which means the tightening the central administrative budget. And that has been, in the time that I've served on the Board and, uh, on the District Accountability Committee, one of the, uh, feedback that we often hear is central administration is growing, and the footprint of the central administration is growing. And that's what we are addressing at this time, ensuring that we are rightsizing central administration while directing the, uh, dollars closest to, uh, the teachers. We'll continue to support our teachers. This is Teacher Appreciation Week, so thank you for all that you guys do in the classrooms in support of our, uh, students. When talking to teachers and staff, the simplest way I talk to them is their responsibility is to take care of the students. We trust them to take care of our students in the classroom. Our responsibility as district leadership is to take care of our staff, and we are committed to doing that now and going forth into the future. Thank you. Um, any other comments at this time from the Board? Okay, thank you, guys. Thank you for the work that you guys have done and convey our gratitude for, uh, to all in the Employee, uh, Employee Engagement Group as well. Okay, we do want to, um, um, provide a report on school ballot issue bond measure consideration. So, um, Superintendent Gall, I'll provide a little bit of context, and you and your staff can update the, uh, district on what is out here. We have ventured by using the, uh, internally looking at our budget itself and reprioritizing some of the MLO dollars. We have started the, um, renovation of Palmer High School and also some of the concerns that came up with the Jenkins rebuild. We are addressing both of those internally, using our current district dollars. None of that requires a tax increase. But going forth, our district is aging. We have several of our schools that are 50, 75 years old, and we need to come up with a plan and a vision. How do we upgrade these schools to modern, um, uh, teaching environment that is conducive to student learning? And one of the things the Board has talked about with the Superintendent is, when is the right time to go for a bond? And, um, uh, that's a community question that we need to address. Um, with that introduction, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Gall.
Thank you, Dr. Malpakum, and to the Board and the community. Uh, it's time. Uh, we have done everything we can with the dollars that we have to make the repairs that we can to what I will call the oldest, uh, set of buildings in El Paso County for schools. I'm super proud of the team and their creativity, one for the COP and the $100 million investment at Palmer, and for the capital dollars that we had allocated for future repair at Jenkins that we've been able to pull forward. Uh, but we are now at our wits' end on large facility, um, repairs. I'm going to start and just remind every folk, uh, folks where we were about three, just about three years ago. This is a slide generated from our, our demographer, Mr. Shannon Bigham, that we put on contract in the fall of '22, and he provided a report on where he thought the district could stop its decrease in enrollment and actually increase the number of students in attendance in District 11 schools. And so you can see the date on this slide is from May of 2023. Uh, and not that we didn't really intend to go in order, but we've gone almost in sequential order. Having continued our pathway schools, our elementary schools have stronger enrollment, stronger attendance, uh, stronger growth and achievement metrics. We are now expanding, with the Board's approval, to pathway middle schools. Our K-12 matriculation continues to get stronger through our area superintendent's model by going back to a traditional high school cluster, celebrating, uh, parent choice, but making sure that parents are engaged with administrators to know what is available in their closest proximity. Uh, thanks to the state for approving universal pre-K. Uh, we have greatly exceeded that number of students retained. We're at about 1,000 this year and expect it to grow to 1,200 next year. Charter expansion, the district has adopted a portfolio strategy and brought in, uh, three existing charters that were authorized by CSI. One of those decisions will come tonight for, uh, Colorado Military Academy. Local authorization is a better use of taxpayer dollars and a better acceptance of parent choice. Uh, the online expansion, we continue to, uh, expand and think about our Spark programming and our, uh, Base Camp, which is our online, online opportunity there, to also help with our homeschool augmentation. You can see those numbers are small, but homeschool and online are the fastest two growing sectors across the state of Colorado for educational choices by parents. Uh, I'm going to draw the line there for a second, just to say, those are things that we are all doing and doing aggressively, and they are all working. Uh, we are the second year in a row positive for overall enrollment as a district. Uh, there are still some schools that have struggled to keep kids. We believe site-based budgeting and holding our staffs accountable to the product that they produce in order for families to choose that will help rectify some of that. But we are now at the yellow-faced area. How is it that we invest in our facilities? I could not be prouder of the work that we've done in the oldest set of facilities within, uh, within El Paso County, but the time has come. I think Jenkins is a stark reminder to anybody who had to attend any of those town halls that says that the newest middle school, uh, is now in need of $30 million of repair. Um, that's, uh, it's a warning shot for us to understand what those risks are for us. Uh, and I ask the Board to consider the rest of this brief as it comes forward, not as taxation, but as investment. Um, I'll get to the next slide. This is just an expansion of Mr. Uh, Shannon, Shannon's work on the, um, recommendations and, and just a little bit more of an expansion of the idea of improving the quality of what our schools look like and their experiences. And for the audience, we've gotten through, uh, nearly all of our elementary school settings are air-conditioned, but nowhere nearly all of our high school and middle schools are air-conditioned. And it's just no longer acceptable that in 2025, both staff, students, and family have to deal with non-conditioned air as, uh, as the world continues to get hotter. I have one more slide before I hand it over to the team. Uh, we did a bit of a summary. I know that the idea of asking the public to invest in your system will be translated into, what does that mean on my fixed income and taxation per hundreds of thousands of dollars of my home's worth? I know those are real, and I know that we are traditionally a conservative city. Oh, I like it. I timed myself out. Thank you. But just across, uh, streets, just north of Woodman and just south of Circle and just southwest of, uh, Ivy Wild, uh, and far out to the east, all our neighboring districts have asked for bonds within the last 20 years, and these are the ones that they have passed. Uh, what we should have done is actually done a total at the bottom of that for us to see how much our districts have been asking for and receiving. Most recently, District 20, our near-peer competitor to the north, asked for, uh, their second bond in the last 10 years uh, to the tune of over $300 million in totality. Uh, we believe, you can see highlights in the bottom, Manitou, District 14, has publicly announced that they're going for a bond in November of '25, and rumor on the street from Cheyenne, District 12, was that they'll be going in November of '26. And so as we think of ourselves as the original school district for Colorado Springs as a city, it's time for us to make sure that we can recapitalize these schools, not just for the current set of students and families, but for the next generation. Our average, uh, age of schools is somewhere over 60 years old. And so this idea of asking our community to partner with us to ensure that the next 60 years' worth of students can be assured of access to a high-quality instruction. Brandon, if you want to grab the clicker here.
Good evening, Board. Uh, we're going to present a few options for you tonight to consider in terms of bond, kind of scale and size. I will reiterate a few of Superintendent Gall's points. Um, students and staff deserve high-quality buildings. They do. Uh, and our students and staff don't deserve that any less than anybody else in the region. It is a wonderful thing that our district currently has no bond debt. That's a wonderful thing, but that really only comes because it's been so long since we've passed a bond. That's a signal to us that it has been too long. Um, and so the first option I'm going to provide is a $500 million, uh, option. Our total bonding capacity is over $800 million, so we're not, we're by no means maxing out, uh, our possibility. Uh, 5 million, 500 million dollars on average is about $5 per month, per $100,000 for households. Um, and we kind of see this breaking into, into three areas. If you remember when we presented the academic support plan, we thought about, and even the Palmer Project, we thought about projects in three areas. Transformational investments, modernizations, and then more kind of smaller targeted investments. So with this, we see spending about 200 to 250 million in transformational investments. We do think we need to rebuild a middle school. There are a number of our middle schools that, um, do not meet snuff right now in terms of high-quality academic programming, so we think we need to rebuild one of those. And we want to bring the Palmer Project to completion. You're going to see, in really excited fashion tonight, we're finally putting money towards the Palmer Project. We're, uh, going to put shovels in the dirt here soon. Uh, and we want to be able to fulfill that master plan with a bond. You'll see modernization. We will finally be able to say every single building, every single classroom, every single office in this district has conditioned air. Not, well, if you're at this school and you're in this room, you get air conditioning, but in these four rooms, you don't. That, it is time for that. Uh, we also see that we would want to do some significant high school modernizations. Now, I'm saying facelift, but I'm talking big investments, 30 to 40 million dollars. Now, that sounds like a lot of money. I'll draw your attention to the Jenkins Project, which is to, uh, build an academic wing is about $30 million. So we do think that our high schools, uh, need that investment to also spread the investment across the district where every single family in our district can benefit. And then we see about $100 million going towards targeted investments. Elementary schools in our district are in the best shape, but they still need help. And with a hundred million dollars spread across the district, as a former elementary principal, you said, hey, you get a million dollars. Me and my community could have come up with some incredible things of what we would do with that money. Uh, we would also obviously invite our charter friends, uh, into the needs assessment process. So that's what we see as a five-hundred-million-dollar project. Shifting to the second option, seven-hundred-and-fifty million. This is about eight dollars per month, per month, per hundred thousand dollars. You'll see largely the same structure with a few key differences. In that transformational investment, again, we are rebuilding a middle school. We're going to complete the Palmer project. We would also pay off the Palmer COPs. Remember, we do have an investment in Palmer through the COP for the next twenty-five years. It would be wonderful to pay that off and then utilize that funding, uh, through the MLO in different ways. We also see that we would do another large additional project. That could be a rebuild of an elementary school. That could be a number of things, but a large transformational investment. Modernizations, again, we would, uh, condition every single space in the district with HVAC. We would do those large high school modernizations, and we would bring middle schools into that as well. So then every single secondary campus would get a significant investment, and, um, every single pathway in our district would, uh, allow families to, uh, you know, kind of embrace those changes. And then again, in that targeted investment, we see a hundred million dollars investing in our elementary schools and our charter friends. We've brought to this, this to the board before in, in considerations. We're thinking about this in bond cycles. Now, we're talking to you about a bond, but what you saw in that regional graphic is that most districts view this in cycles over time. Nobody has a cycle over time of two decades, but most are kind of leaning in that eight-to-ten year, uh, range. We see our, our, our neighbors to the north, um, are doing that. And so we can absolutely get into a conversation to assure that over multiple bond cycles over many years, that this entire district gets recapitalized, uh, and then we are ready for the next one-hundred-and-fifty years. Timelines. There are lots of things that need to happen if the board is interested in a bond. Obviously, I know that the consideration is for this November or next. Uh, we're showing this slide only to show that we are well aware of the timelines. Um, we are well-prepared for that, and obviously at the direction of the board, we will, um, act on that, um, as soon as ready. We do think that a key question to consider is a poll. I think everybody wants to know what the community feels, and so this is just some polling logistics and possibilities. There's lots of way to do polling across the system to see how the community feels, but I think we are very interested in the board considering a poll now to see how our community feels about the recapitalization efforts of the district. And I believe that's all we have.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board on what was presented at this time? Director Bankers? And if you can leave those slides on if necessary. Thank you.
Two things. Thank you for explaining the bond cycle. I mean, I'm familiar with curriculum cycles where, you know, things get out of date, and we need to plan for those in advance. And I don't think I've ever been involved in a conversation at this level where we've had a longer plan other than what comes next and what Band-Aid can we put on and hope, um, the community will support that. But I think with the bond cycle that you've laid out, over time, whatever that time happens to be, is a logical approach of how it is that we're going to maintain the buildings that we have in our district. Our enrollment seems to be stabilizing out, and I think that when we take a look at working conditions in buildings that are fifty, sixty years old, uh, and before I ran for the board, I was in a building that was, um, over fifty years old, there are things that need to be upgraded and changed just for the environmental safety of everyone who's in that building. The other thing, um, I think it's a wise step to ask our community in a broad as base as possible through a question or questions, um, if there's support for it or not. Um, individually, we can talk to maybe groups of people, but not reach the same pool of comments that we could with a, um, a survey. So I'm in favor of a survey.
You're done. Okay. Director Nelson.
Yeah, I just wanted to put a little context out there, um, regarding the budget of a school district is anywhere from eighty to eighty-five percent goes towards salary and benefits. This is, uh, very common across school districts across this, the nation. And so when you think about our budget is around eighty-five percent towards salary and benefits, that does not allow a lot of room for capital projects. So the mechanism in Colorado or in, uh, across the nation for, uh, massive capital investment is through a bond. That's just sort of naturally, uh, what plays out in, um, what you see for budgeting in, in school districts. I did want to ask what the timing on the poll results would be, if you have an idea, when we would be getting that back, and it's...
We're prepared to post an RFP tomorrow, uh, and award that shortly thereafter to have results back to the board, uh, before we end this, um, school year.
Okay.
So at the end of June.
Okay, um, I've been thinking a little bit about that, some of those messaging themes that we're thinking about testing. I don't know how that would work, but to me, communicating that eighty-five percent of our budget goes towards salary and benefits, that hits home for me. Like, oh, yeah, there's not a lot left over for, when you think about curriculum, utilities. So I don't know if we could put some kind of language to test for that. And then it, are we going to also ask questions around like the specific dollar amounts that home, homeowners would be impacted? Like that they would understand that we're talking, if you have a four-hundred-thousand, four-hundred-thousand-dollar home, your taxes are going to go up twenty dollars a month? I know that's probably not something we really want to advertise, but that's what would happen, and I want to make sure that we're honest about that because, um, we want to also make our community affordable to live in. So just something for you to consider. You don't have to answer right now.
I don't have the polling answer for that, but, um, we will make sure we scan for that when we go through the RFP process.
Okay, great. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the update to the board. I don't see any other comments or questions from the board at this time. Um, we look forward to the results of the poll and then, um, the community will let us know when the appropriate time is to go for a bond, and the poll helps us in making that decision. So we look forward to the results of the poll and then the next steps that we need to, but this is investment in our children's future. As Director Nelson said, eighty-five percent of the money is being spent on compensation if we need to, um, ensure that we have learning environments that are, uh, conducive to student learning, environments that are modern. We just need to find a time when it is appropriate to go for a bond. So thank you for that, uh, information, and we look forward to additional information coming in front of the board. The next item on the agenda is board member reports. Board, uh... Director Heifly, you're up first.
Thank you. Uh, over the, the past few weeks, I've had the pleasure of attending a wide variety of events throughout the district, and I just wanted to highlight a few of them because there's some pretty great things happening across the district. Number one, I only, I have pictures for some of them, and I'm going to address those in a second. Number one, the unified theater performances at Coronado and Mitchell. Um, I know there were performances at Palmer and Doherty, um, but I was at Coronado and Mitchell, so I want to talk about them. These productions were outstanding. Um, these kids are incredible, and Mr. Reed, our district's unified theater teacher, did a tremendous job in coordinating performances at all four of the high schools. I had a chance to see Brave and Big Hero Six, and both were phenomenal. Even the students in the audience showed incredible kindness and support toward their peers in the unified performances, and watching that really warmed my heart. Uh, number two, I had a chance to get out to the FOTC where I had the opportunity to see the program that transportation uses to fill field trip requests, and that's quite a system that they run. And, uh, also I was given a tour of the new freezer facility, which by the way is massive, um, and it's very, very cold. I, I, they took me in one set of doors, walked me down it, and then walked me out another set, and I was grateful to see that second set of doors because it was, it was just very cold. Huge. This thing is, this, it's like Costco in there. Um, number three, the fifth-grade rocket launch at Memorial Park. And I took some pictures. You'll have to forgive me. Um, my iPhone didn't get very good video of the rockets up in the, up in the sky, so, um, all I have are snapshots. Um, this event was a blast. Students learned about propulsion, thrust, and the science of launching rockets. These, um, so here are the rockets there on the right, and then the control, um, what do you call that? I guess just a table, um, where they are, uh, hooked up to where the rockets are being launched, and then the kids would, would press the little launch button, and, and man, was that, was that cool. Uh, along with our fifth graders, we had support from our high school students and community partners like UCCS, Lockheed Martin, Estes Rocket, the United States Air Force Academy, the Colorado Springs Rocket Society, and FCEA, AFCEA, excuse me, the Armed Forces Communications and Electronics Association, who I'm told approved a grant for the cost of the rockets. This was an impressive collaboration and a great hands-on learning experience. And now to Coronado. Um, this is the market day. This happens every year in the auxiliary gym. Um, it's led by marketing teacher Cindy Brandt, whom I've known for a very long time. Um, this annual event transforms the auxiliary gym into a bustling marketplace where students eat a variety of products. They run their own small businesses, is what they're doing. And, um, everything from food and drinks. Um, I saw kids making fried rice. I saw other kids making snow cones. Um, some kids were making their own jewelry, uh, bracelets, earrings. Um, others had personal care items like sugar scrub and lip balm. Uh, this is an immersive lesson in entrepreneur, entrepreneurship, and Cindy does a phenomenal job guiding them through the step. The picture of the young man on the right, that's Isaiah, and Isaiah graduated from Coronado a year ago. I had him as a sophomore, um, in US history class, and here he was, he came back to help out. Some of his friends, looks like they're selling, uh, popcorn, and, um, some were selling soda pops, some were selling, uh, energy drinks, and then of course, other kids were, were creating the things that they were selling. It was, it was really, really cool. Um, the students loved that particular event, and, and it shows because that auxiliary gym usually just has around the corners of it, but you can see the middle of it is completely taken up as well. So there were quite a few more kids that were running their own, um, small businesses, and they're not, they're not just selling things and setting up, and it's not all about money for them. They're learning how to run a business. They do their own, uh, SWOT analysis, and, um, they're coming up with ideas, and they're hiring their friends to come work for them. It's, it's really, really pretty, pretty impressive. They were even grilling outside and selling, um, cheeseburger sliders, and, and, um, so kids were, th- there's the fried rice kid. Now, I'll tell you, these chips on the right, they were trying to sell these bags of chips for three bucks each. Three bucks for a small bag of chips, and they tried as they might to try to get me to purchase a three-dollar bag of chips. I did not buy that three, three-dollar bag of chips. I'm, I'll be honest with you. Um, I have the palate of a ten-year-old, so that, that kind of stuff, I just, I just didn't like it. Sorry. But they worked really hard, and they were, they were, he, th- this young man who was making the, the fried rice was telling me all about the ingredients that he was putting in that, and, and the kids were walking around just really chowing down. They were having a great time. Uh, and finally, the North Middle School Black Box Room was called the Monster Within. This was inspired by Meow Wolf up in Denver, where drama and art students collaborated on a powerful project that visually and emotionally captured the internal struggles that many students face. It was pretty impressive. I thoroughly enjoyed the tour. I know that we were all invited to see that, so if you haven't seen it, it, it took maybe twenty minutes, and it was, it was fantastic. What was really cool was that I was being guided on this tour by some of the students who helped bring this project to life. Um, the three kids that I was with were River, John, and Gene Aviv. These were eighth graders who were pretty, pretty clear, pretty clearly proud of their work, and rightfully so. Their creativity and imagination were on full display, and the result was both eye-opening and inspiring. I've always believed that art and drama allows students to express their most creative and vulnerable selves, and it's wonderful to see North providing such a meaningful outlet. So thank you to the schools and the facilities areas that allowed me to, to, um, come visit them. Thank you.
Thank you for the report, Director Heifly. And, uh, the rocket launch, it's going to happen again tomorrow. Uh, there was some weather-related issues last week, and some schools didn't get to participate in it and was postponed to tomorrow. So another opportunity for, uh, board members or other community members to go to Memorial Park and see it. I think it's, uh, scheduled for tomorrow morning. And, uh, again, a phenomenal program by, uh, teacher Rex Reed out there. All four, uh, all four of our high schools held that unified theater, and walking into the theater to a packed auditorium, the entire student body come to support the students. That was, uh, just phenomenal. Thank you. Director Nelson.
Uh, so I just want to share also a little about some performances I've been able to attend recently. Visual and performing arts is alive and well in District eleven. Last week, the Saban Middle School Orchestra Band and Choir sounded amazing at their fifty year anniversary celebration. The, uh, music performances were very, very impressive, and so I wanted to give them a little shout-out. Last, um, evening, I guarantee I had more fun than the rest of my fellow board members when I left the meeting to attend the district-wide dance ensemble to watch my daughter perform with her school. It was a blast. The audience was a riot, um, just cheering on their students. Four of our schools came together to show off their dance moves. Doherty and Coronado High School, Russell Middle School, and Martinez Elementary School participated, showcasing choreography, talent, and teamwork. As a visual and performing arts school, Martinez put on a very entertaining pirate musical on April thirtieth, and I know many of our schools are demonstrating all the hard work from, over the year with band, orchestra, choir concerts, and art shows at this time. My personal calendar has been very full the last couple of weeks, so praise for the staff and parents. I want to recognize how you make the time and put in the effort to celebrate the kids. Thank you for this extra push at the end of the year. Yesterday, I completed one of my board member tasks. Every year, we as a school board divvy out all of the schools between us to visit throughout the year. We're up to like fifty-six now with the charters that we've brought in, and, um, I am grateful for the tours I received from the nine schools I visited: Adams, Carver, King, Monroe, James Irwin, West, Saban, Swiger, and Tesla High School. I really enjoyed learning more about each of your schools, and the offer still stands that if there is anything we can do as a school board to support you, please let me know. Thank you for your time walking me through your school and for your continued commitment to improving academic achievement, and I am keeping it brief tonight because I know we're, we're going to be here for hours still.
Thank you. Director Art.
Thank you. I just, um, I appreciate what my fellow directors had to say about their school visits, especially the market day. Coronado, which I was late for. Hi, yes, I'm in the back of the room. Sorry. Oh, now I'm everywhere. Um, couldn't be there. Apologies. Um, but many of those visits, uh, for sports and the arts, field trips that happen, um, through overnight or even in the summer, and I was struck by this with robotics this weekend as well. Many of our elementary schools with high school student assistants were participating in, um, a robotics event at Wason, and it was just a very busy place happening there between a car show and field, track and field, and this robotics event. And I just want to recognize that our teachers not only put in full days, but we can find them, um, on their weekends and evenings as well. And so especially since it is Teacher Appreciation Week, I want to recognize that and say thank you to our teachers and other staff who continue to make such a difference for our students. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the mention about the robotics event that happened this weekend. There were 17 schools, 17 District 11 schools that were participating out there, kindergarten to fifth grade and seeing some of these students doing complex equations and math problems to figure things out. They were advanced grade level learning that was happening through this robotics program. And I think Duane Roberson, I see Duane, he was instrumental in running that program. There was a Duane and Duane connection out there. So big shout out to both the Duanes. Director Bankus.
I also want to thank my fellow board member, Director Hayfley, for visiting that freezer because I remember when we approved that expense and they showed us the old freezer and then they showed us for how many thousands upon thousands of dollars for a new freezer. And it was huge. And I remember asking, is all of that space for one freezer? And the answer was yes, so that we could better, we could better resource our food and cafeteria folks so they could deliver the food that our kids eat. And so thank you for doing the walkthrough and it's nice to hear the follow-up. I'm not walking through the freezer, yeah. I also want to give a shout out to the Apprentice Fair and the Apprentice Luncheon that we attended last week. The kids who are involved in the opportunity to sample these different careers and the difference it makes in their lives and the opportunity for them to have a pathway once they graduate out of high school makes such a difference. I know when I first got on the board and then we brought on Superintendent Gall, he had highlighted and pinpointed the fact that not all of our kids, we don't have a 100% graduation rate. And the concern over the last three years that I've sat on the board is, and what are we doing for the kids? And when you listen to the portfolio plan that I have not heard of and I've been in education a long, excuse me, a long time, a portfolio of opportunity for our students and the future centers that we've set up in our high schools, gives our kids that opportunity not to be lost or slide through the cracks or, oh, they'll figure it out. And they have so many more opportunities and we want to make sure that we encourage them to sample them. Not, I bet there's not one person in this room that started out with their first job and today still has that same job. We know that sampling careers is an important piece. We know that it takes maturity and life experience in order to decide what it is that you want to do with your life. And how can we do that better than the portfolio of opportunity that we are providing? And I thank Mr. Gall for bringing that opportunity to District 11. As you saw, the kids who came through with all the various opportunities that they've taken advantage of, it's exciting to be in District 11. I'm proud to be able to talk to my friends in different states and say, well, we're doing this. We can, we're going to listen to Colorado Military Academy tonight and sharing with friends in another state saying, and you know, if you chose to send your child to that charter school, that child, your child, could graduate out of high school with a private pilot's license, part of your education, part of their education. They're astounded. Of course they are because this is different. It's new. We broke ground on the CSST the other day, Science and Technology School, where our kids will have an opportunity to be housed in an area. That brings up their professionalism to a point where they are being considered as somebody, not as a kid in high school, but somebody who has skill and talent. And you listen to some of these folks who competed and have, and taken awards because of the work that they have done through the teachers who've encouraged them, through the district that's provided those opportunities. Thank you to the parents. Thank you to the students. Thank you to all the adults in District 11 who have made it possible. I'm proud to be part of District 11. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for spotlighting that apprenticeship lunch event that we had last year. It had seven students. This year, that number has doubled to almost 14 students. I think it's 13. So it's growing. These are students that work in our facilities or media department, IT department, some are interpreters, and they get paid to graduate. So that's the fun thing about that. You have something more to add, Director Bankus.
I, I wanted to make sure, I also gave a shout out to, to Doherty's Unified Theater Production and the kids being able to be on stage. And every one of those children, and I counted maybe 70 kids upon that stage, every one of those kids had an opportunity to verbally participate in the stage or in the play. And the play was so well. It was Hotel Transylvania. I guess I'm one of the very few people who've never watched the movie. And I understand there's like four editions of those out there. But the play was well done. Each child had a speaking part. The teacher, I'm sorry, I don't remember his name, the teacher who ran around with the microphone.
Rex Reed.
What was his name?
Rex Reed.
Rex Reed.
Ryan Reed.
Ryan Reed. Ryan Reed did a wonderful job. It was such a happy, uplifting opportunity. The audience, full of high school kids, were so respectful. They were just outstanding. And we've heard comments about equity and treating each child. If you were to be there in that audience and you saw a couple hundred kids behaving in such a sophisticated way to support their peers, whether their peers were able or, or not as able, you would be proud to be able to say, this is what our youth is doing today. Thank you for letting me share that.
Thank you. And that was one of the packed auditoriums out there, so we had to spend the time standing up. We were just five minutes before the show started, but we didn't have a seat, so we had to stand at the back of the room. Yeah, it was great. I'm going to finish with my comments. Several of the board members have talked about the visual arts in several of our schools. If you click one more, yeah, that will come up too. I want to spotlight what happened at Doherty. Performance of Under the Sea, it's the Little Mermaid out there. It was always a joy to watch our students perform, but during the middle interval that was there, I got to talk to our VAPA coordinator, which is Ms. Kim Kincaid, and she talked about some of the challenges that Doherty experienced in putting together this program, so much so that a week before this program was going live in front of the audience, they had to pull in staff from other schools to make sure that the program was going to go as advertised. It takes a village sometimes to put together a show like this and it was a phenomenal show. A year, a hour and a half of pure entertainment. So if you have an opportunity to visit one of our schools and look at a theater or a drama program, I strongly encourage you to do that. But I do want to give Ms. Lynn Godwin-Wentry, she's the Mitchell Theater Director, and Ms. Erin Ambrose from the Coronado Theater Director. Both of them had to step into Doherty to ensure, in the last 10 days, they had to step in at the last minute to provide, to provide guidance to these students, to bring together all the elements that is necessary, the choreography, the music, the technology, the performance, all of it. It was a seamless production out there. So huge shout out to both of those teachers, rock stars at Mitchell and Coronado. And there is a transition going on at Doherty Theater Program and I'm sure they will have another rock star teacher out there next year as well. And there were other teachers and parents that were involved as well. So Emma Lepore taught the Camillo, Ashley Civilly, Derek Fisher from Media Production, Sabrina Boo, Bob with costumes, Hannah Atencio with Design Production. So huge shout out to all these people to make that amazing show happen. And if you move on to the next slide out there. Director Bankus, Director Art, and I attended the SEWA Soiree. I struggle with how to pronounce that. Soiree, okay, great. My daughter was with me as well. This was such an amazing production out there. It's an art and, art magnet school for us, charter school. But what was put together out there was two and a half hours of entertainment that would rival anything put together by professionals that you would attend, paying a considerable amount of money out there. So these students put together song, dance, and theater performances under the guidance of Mr. and Mrs. Mattson. And I, and I talk about this because we offer theater program in our schools as well. But what SEWA offers is something at an enhanced level. So some of these students are going to pursue theater and arts and music and they've got, they introduced a couple of students who are going to get scholarship to attend premier So some of the opportunities that we cannot provide for our students because of the way we, you know, are restricted at our local schools, SEWA is able to provide that specialized support just in the arts. They, they don't have a sports program, but students that are interested in arts go there and thrive in that program. It was just a phenomenal program out there. So I just wanted to give a shout out to SEWA. And when we are going to talk about Colorado Military Academy later on this evening, that is the same type of opportunity that a school out there like Colorado Military Academy offers, whether it is going to be the Civil Air Patrol Program or the character development that happens in that school. It's unique to CMA that we cannot offer. So the, these opportunities, we want to make sure parents get the choice as to which school and students get to choose which schools that they want to go to. Last year, I do want to give a congratulations. This, in, when I was looking at the Gazette this weekend, these are the Best of Springs 2025 winners. And there are several District 11 schools and District 11 charter schools highlighted here, along with the District 11 educators out here. And Thomas McLaren is prominently featured in all three levels, elementary, middle, and high schools. And it's one of the D11 portfolio schools at this time. So congratulations to all these amazing winners and amazing schools. Jenkins Middle School, which has gone, gone through a transition because of all the movement. It is one of the schools. This is our community voting their voice and picking Jenkins as one of the top middle schools in Colorado Springs, along with Freedom Elementary School. And kudos to both those principals for the amazing program that they run there and congratulations. That's all I have for my report. Adoption of consent items. Please make the motion to adopt the consent items.
Absolutely. I move that the Board of Education adopts all consent items as designated in the agenda. The consent items are: F2, approval of April 2nd, 2025, regular meeting minutes; F3, approval of April 9th, 2025, special meeting minutes; F4, approval of April 16th, 2025, special meeting minutes; F5, approval of April 30th, 2025, special meeting minutes; F6, personnel recommendations for May 7th, 2025; F7, policy IKF graduation requirements alignment; F8, Resolution 2025-37, Mental Health Awareness Month; F9, Resolution 2025-38, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month; F10, Resolution 2025-43, Better Hearing and Speech Month Resolution.
Second.
Moved and seconded by multiple people, including, I think I heard a voice coming from up there, so I'm assuming that's Director Art. So thank you. And thank you, Director Jorgensen, for bringing that new resolution, which came from one of our staff members, the Better Hearing and Speech Month Resolution. With that, roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpaca?
Aye.
Director Art?
Aye.
The I7, the consent items have been adopted.
Aye.
Oh, did you miss, did you miss Director Nelson?
I did, because she voted online, but I should have called.
Okay. Was an aye for this?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the action item, we already talked about National Teacher Appreciation Week, that is a resolution. Director Hayfley, can you please read the resolution and make the motion for action item G1?
Yes, thank you. Resolution 2025-32, National Teacher Appreciation Week, May 5th through the 9th, 2025. Whereas America's greatest strength has always been an educated citizenry and that quality of citizenry is directly attributable to our system of free and universal public education. Whereas the foundation upon which that system of public schooling rests is the teacher, who is challenged daily to reach out to every student to provide the assistance and guidance necessary for full intellectual development. Whereas the work of the teacher immeasurably affects the future lives of all students. Whereas Colorado Springs School District 11 has over 1,800 certified teachers, who include our classroom instructional teachers, special service providers, counselors, behavior specialists, and library technology educators. Our dedicated teachers support and care for the educational, social, emotional, and health needs for all our diverse students. And whereas teachers are also necessary and valued coaches, including teacher learning and literacy coaches, to provide professional support for our other teachers. Now therefore, be it resolved that the teachers of School District 11 be given the deepest respect and admiration of the citizens of this community and that May 5th through the 9th, 2025, be recognized as National Teacher Appreciation Week. In witness whereof, we have hereunto set our hands and cause the official seal of said school district to be hereunto affixed the 7th day of May, 2025. I move that the Board of Education adopts Resolution 2025-32, recognizing May 5th through 9th, 2025, as National Teacher Appreciation Week.
Second. Moved and seconded. Superintendent Gall, we have some.
We have some speakers, Dr. Comfort and Kevin.
Mr. Koffler, good to have you.
Good evening, Board. I'll keep my comments brief. This is my favorite board meeting of the week. I come from a family of teachers. And so obviously, I'm very grateful and proud of the work that our teachers do and I'm sure Mr. Koffler will speak much more eloquently about that. And my younger sister is currently a kindergarten teacher, grinding out the last few weeks in a, in a classroom. And so it is the one time of year when I get to shout her out. So I love you, Jess. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Koffler.
Thank you, Dr. Comfort. Good evening. For the past 23 years, I enjoyed some of the best gifts ever to celebrate the work that I've done as a teacher. Beginning of my career, I used to be jealous of things that my colleagues at other schools or other districts received, you know, extravagant gifts. And it took me a little while to realize that the gifts that matter most are the relationships, the struggles, the smiles, the cries, the personalized drawings, the macaroni necklaces, the jokes, and all the hugs and the different ways that teachers and staffs all over the place throughout this country connect with the families and the children that they work with. So how do you appreciate people who work extremely hard at what they do? We say thank you, as you all have done. Two words of praise to tell all the people I express gratitude for, to all the people that we know are lifesavers and they are experts at helping children succeed in way more than just academics. We're grateful to you and all that you do. It's your kindness and your support to the kids in District 11 that is what is amazing to me. You are the teacher. You are one of the most influential people in the lives of those you care for, protect, and educate daily. This profession you've chosen and turned into a career is thankful for you for doing that. Thank you for being your best and creating safe and inclusive learning spaces for children and family in the Colorado Springs community. Even though at times this job feels thankless, especially right now, these last few weeks of school can be a struggle for teachers, we must take the time to reflect and realize the positive impacts that we create in our classrooms every day. Personally, I can't thank teachers enough for what they did for me here in District 11 and CSEA values the work teachers do daily. You mean so much to the students you connect with and create meaningful relationships with, and we know your actions and hard work speak volumes. Teachers, your support and the work you do in schools will have more of a positive impact in the lives of those you teach than you probably will ever fully know and understand. I feel honored being part- I feel honored being part of the amazing educators in this country, and personally, I'm thankful for everything that teachers do. The Colorado Springs Education Association recognizes and is grateful for all the amazing teachers out there, and we admire and appreciate you not only this week, but we thank you for every day being an integral part of the most important profession on earth. Thank you.
Thank you. Board, any comments before I ask for a roll call? I don't see any, so thank you again. Thank you for reading the resolution. And to our community, Teacher Appreciation Week is this week. Please engage with your local schools. There are numerous opportunities to show your gratitude to our teachers. Schools could be having a luncheon to support our teachers, so there are numerous ways that you can help. A simple thank you note would also suffice. So, thank you. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the resolution for National Teacher Appreciation Week has been approved by the Board. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, this is instructional materials and secondary course approval. Director Jorgensen, can you please make the motion for action item G2, instructional materials and secondary course approval, Spring 2025?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education approves the instructional resources, course revisions, and new course proposals for Spring 2025.
Second.
Moved and seconded, this information was presented to the Board as non-action item during the April 2nd regular board meeting. The Board has since received additional information from administration in response to questions that were presented. Superintendent Gall, do you have any additional information for the Board to consider at this time?
I do not. My team stands by for any further questions. I'm ordered.
Okay, thank you. Board, any discussions at this time? Ms. Olson, if you, let me switch all these off. There you go. Okay, any questions or comments about the course approvals? And I see Director Ott's hand as well. Director Jorgensen, do you have a comment?
Yeah. I just wanted to say thank you. We had staff that had piloted some programs in curriculum stay late when they came the first time, and then we had a follow-up email with some of the data that one of the staff members didn't quite get to share on CKLA, excuse me. And so I just thank you to that for staff going above and beyond to show that we've reviewed it, we've piloted it, and that we're going to have some good success with it. So, thank you for that legwork ahead of time.
Thank you. Director Ott?
Thank you. I did have some concerns about one of the items, so I have an opposed amendment. I move that the Board of Education approves the instructional, sorry, this is the wrong part. I move to amend the main motion by adding the words "after removing the professional medium practicum I and II from the new course approvals and voting on those courses separately," sorry, individually, as a new action item, G9.
So you're proposing a new motion at this time?
I'm proposing an amendment.
Okay.
So that we might separately consider that particular course.
Okay. Could you repeat the amendment again?
Sure. My motion is to amend the main motion, so that would be the approval. So to amend the main motion by adding the words "after removing the professional media practicum I and II from the new course approvals and voting on those courses individually as a new action item, G9." I sent that to the Board yesterday afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Director Ott, there is an amendment motion on the floor. I need a second. I don't hear a second at this time, Director Ott.
Okay, thank you.
The proposed motion doesn't move forward as such. So we can discuss your concerns, what you have about the courses, if you have any additional questions at this time or concerns.
Well, I do want to share my concerns then. And disappointment, because ideally, we wouldn't have to wade into the technicalities and for this, my particular concerns. If, but I'll go for it. We, this course is proposed by a separate organization from the district. It would be the first partner-proposed course in which the partnering organization teaches the course and offers work-based learning. And I appreciate the innovation behind this idea and the possibility of the hybrid program. But my concern is several things. One, the partnering organization is proposing the instructor, and it would appear that the principal of such a partnership would have to accept the partner-proposed instructor as long as they can get their CTE instruction certification. There's no rubric, so we may be setting up our staff for a haphazard approach to approval of these proposed courses. There's no requirements that, it's my understanding, that they meet the standards we're teaching. One might assume they will, but we don't have the assurance. There is no guidance as well to decide how this course would fit in with currently offered classes or the classes we have with existing partners, such as Pike's Peak State College, which does offer numerous journalism classes. In this particular case, this is a journalism ethics class and practicum. Pike's Peak State College already offers that kind of class. We don't have any curriculum for the course to approve. And finally, the internship opportunities don't appear to be defined beyond this one news organization. And to me, that's concerning, because this is, this particular news organization admits to and encourages its, what might be considered a bias in its own programming. And if students' values don't align with that, my concern is that they're, you know, in an internship, work-based learning environment, they may not get the promotion or the opportunities other students might have. And we don't have the other internship possibilities set up, other collaborations with other organizations to ensure those internships would succeed. So I was asking for a separate vote so that we could avoid holding up the other proposed courses, but obviously, the Board chose not to. So, thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you. Thank you for the feedback. Superintendent Gall, is there anybody in the district that can answer some of the concerns? I think some of these questions were answered in the email that came to the Board with
The district believes it's answered these questions, so I'm awaiting more direction from the Board if there is further debate.
Okay. So my understanding is that this class is going to teach objective journalism, radio broadcasting, and ethics regarding to journalism without exposing our student to any specific ideologies? Would that be a fair statement?
That's correct.
Okay. And this will fall under our CTE program, and the person that is going to be teaching this class will have to acquire a CTE license if he or she doesn't have one already.
Dwayne, can you answer that?
Good evening, Board members. Yeah, the practice of hiring outside teacher, they would have to have a CTE license in multimedia. That's the same license that we require of any other CTE teacher. It's a full license under the state of Colorado, so it would fully authorize them. And then we would independently contract with them for a point two, is what we would anticipate the need to be.
Okay. This is not something that is unique. We do have these type of contracts with CTE teachers on a contract basis who come and teach our students.
It is. It's unusual, because we would prefer to have a full or part-time teacher if we can get one. In this particular case, it's more akin to a relationship that we might have for a college adjunct, where we do use college adjuncts on a case-by-case basis more frequently.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I had. Anybody else have any questions about this particular course or anything else that is coming in front of the Board at this time? Director Bankus, do you have a question? No? Okay, great. Seeing no further questions, the original motion is on the floor still, and that was to approve the instructional resource, course revision, and new course proposals together as a packet. That, seconded, so I'm going to call a vote on that. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
No.
Thank you. The motion passes as presented. Okay, the next one is the resolution for approval of the Colorado Military Academy Charter School Transfer Application. Director Nelson, can you please make the motion for action item G3, approval of the Colorado Military Academy Charter School Transfer Application?
I move that the Board approves Resolution 2025-30, approval of the Colorado Military Academy Charter School Transfer Application.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. This item was presented to the Board as a non-action item topic during the April 16th special meeting, which included a comprehensive review and scheduled public hearing as well. Since that time, the Board has received additional information from Colorado Military Academy Administration in response to the Board questions, as well as a comprehensive DAC report. And I see that there are several people from the Military Academy in the audience as well. Superintendent Gall, any additional information for the Board to consider at this time?
Dr. Comfort? Yeah, good evening, Board. We did send some additional information as well, as you did receive DAC feedback. I'm going to invite Ms. Steponik from our DAC review team up in a moment to share her thoughts. And then obviously, the CMA team here is, the CMA team is here to answer any questions you still may have.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Gall. My name is Velvet Steponik, and I am the DAC Charter School Review Subcommittee. The DAC is required by Colorado Lodge to provide the Board an independent review of charter school applications to our district. I want to thank Dr. Brandon Comfort and Mr. Chris Kilroy for coordinating with us for this review and for the charter school transfer application. I also want to thank Colorado Military, the Colorado Military Academy team for providing their application and answering additional questions. They did answer some of the other questions that we had, it was when they presented to the Board on April 16th, but our report was almost complete at that time. The DAC Subcommittee members that worked on this review consisted of parents from the elementary, middle, and high school levels in the district, community members, D-11 employees, and a charter school teacher. Thank you to these volunteers for their time spent meeting, discussing, and reviewing the materials for our report. The DAC supports school choice. We are supportive of schools that serve all students and add value to the D-11 portfolio of schools. When we are looking at a new charter school application, we carefully look at the application and ask the questions. Does the plan have the ability to serve all students? How does the school fit into the D-11 portfolio? And is this the school we would consider sending our own child to? When we look at a transfer application, we look at additional data that we can review to see how well the school is running and verify the school's success. The Colorado Military Academy has been running since, started in the fall of 2017. Because of this, the DAC used additional information that was available in addition to the application submitted by the school. We looked at the school website, the school performance frameworks, the school improvement plans available from the Colorado Department of Education website, and we also looked at the annual review of schools, the CARs report from the Colorado Charter School Institute, the current authorizer of CMA. Based on what was provided from the Colorado Military Academy and our additional sources, we produced the report attached on Board docs with strengths, concerns, and questions for Board consideration when making their decision about the transfer application for CMA. CMA has several strengths. They have strong enrollment, a unique program for the Colorado Springs community, considering how much military we have here. They have a thriving Civil Air Patrol program, leadership opportunities for schools, and they add, do add value to the D-11 portfolio of schools. We also had some concerns. CMA is on year three of the state clock from their school performance framework. CMA's performance has been lowered because of participation rates for three years. According to the CARs report, achievement and growth levels are decreasing at the elementary and middle school levels from 2018 through 2024. CMA uses MAP testing, but the application that we saw didn't provide data to show if there's been performance improvement this school year. The MTSS handbook that was referenced in the application also was not available. We did hear, when they presented to you earlier, they talked a lot, some about having a dean that they were utilizing, but that was more at the high school level. So some of the main questions we have is, are you actually, are you working with the state if you're year three on the clock? Are you working with the state to get off the clock? And does the MAP data from this school year show your academic performance will improve this year? Are you using data to inform instruction and improve academic performance at all levels? CMA mentioned they're fixing some things to help with their participation rates, but is that going to be enough? This is the third year. There are additional strengths and concerns and questions documented in the DAC report for the Board to read in detail. So in conclusion, CMA is a school that will definitely add value to the D-11 portfolio of schools. We have concerns because they are year three on the state clock. The DAC hopes that our full report aids the Board in making their decision on the CMA application and their transfer to D-11. I don't know if there's any questions that you had based on the report that I sent or not, but...
Okay. First, I would like to thank you and the members of the DAC who reviewed this application, took the time to provide that comprehensive report to the Board. So we do appreciate the feedback that comes from you. We do, I'm sure I and the rest of the Board members as well, read that report and some of the questions that we will direct to the CMA staff will be based on your reports. And thank you for the effort that you put into it. Board, any specific questions to Mr. Steponik at this time? Okay, I don't see any, but thank you for being here and presenting. Is there additional information that is going to come from CMA at this time? And we have Colonel Roberts. Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Gall and all of District 11 Board. Thank you for allowing us to appear for you again. I appreciate the DAC's report is very thorough and I think very fair questions, so I'd like to skip right to that. But I would also like to, I'm Nicole Roberts, by the way, the Executive Director and the Commander for the 805 Squadron within the Civil Air Patrol Program at CMA. I do have my two principals here, Mr. Zakitis and Mr. Van Norman, as well as my finance officer, who's amazing. So I would like to go ahead and get to those questions from the DAC, so I can get those answered, so that I can allow for whatever questions may follow that. Thank you also, Dr. Malpakum, for coming and visiting my school. Thank you for taking the time out and allowing us to show you around and visit. Appreciate your time. For priority improvement year three, we convened a task force with teacher and administrative representatives from each level, the Charter School Instant, Institute, excuse me, the contractors from MINGA, to conduct a comprehensive root cause analysis of what we need to do, where we need to go, and how we need to fix things. We increase monitoring and data dashboard to track progress on our UIP goals, reports made monthly to school board, and adjust strategies as needed. You will see as we follow through this plan, we are meeting all of our strategic plan goals as I brief this. Our elementary and ELA math declines, we identified those gaps in curriculum and created targeted interventions. We've introduced grade-level PLC, culture-focused, and state standards, analyzing academic and benchmark data, and designed scaffold lessons that build fundamental and foundational skills. We provide ongoing job-embedded coaching to elementary teachers and evidence-based practices using Marzano Hattie Strategies, structured literacy approaches in the Hagerty Curriculum. Oh, I, yes ma'am, I'm so sorry, I sure can. Do you want me to start over? I can. Okay. Yes, ma'am. Sorry, I got rolling and got really excited about this. I'll slow right back down. So we, our elementary, you know, the declines that we've been there, we've identified the gaps in curriculum, and we created the targeted interventions to actually aid in those gaps. We've introduced grade-level PLC, culture-focused on state standards, analyzing academic and benchmark data, and designing scaffold lessons that build foundational skills. Providing ongoing job-embedded coaching to elementary teachers on evidence-based practices using structured literacy approaches like using structured literacy approaches like Hagerty in curriculum. We found that throughout our observations and our lists of all of our curriculum that it all needed to be streamlined and updated, so that was one of our deficits that we found ourselves and we fixed. As well as with military... Uh, excuse me, military, excuse me, middle school ELA and math declines, we redesigned the middle school master schedule to include built-in math and literacy support periods, ensuring uninterrupted intervention time. We piloted a collaborative model in the grades six through eight, pairing content disciplines with each other and ESS teachers interventionists to differentiate instruction and accelerate growth. We use the MTSS process with fidelity and identify individual gaps with benchmark data and research-based curriculum. Our high school, our EBRW in math declines. We expanded our prep seminars and tutoring to emphasize and support academic expectations and provide students with advisory opportunities. We integrate writing across the curriculum initiatives, teacher teams, and social studies, science, math, and CTE. We'll embed EPRW practice into lessons. We created teacher cohort professional development on math instructional routines and writing pagogi. Financial management and organizational performance. CMA has recognized a significant positive change in fund balance. For the past two fiscal years, 927,582 in FY '23 and 1,479,000 FY '24, these two years of strong financial performance resulted in a beginning FY '25 fund balance of three... over $3 million. Projected year-end net income for FY '25 is $1,900,000. This is based on cash flow analysis. A big question that we get all the time is we have been in financial... We've had had financial issues in the past. Our school was still up in 2017. We kind of had the poverty mindset for a lot of those first beginning years because we were trying to save money to make sure that we were investing in our teachers and our curriculum to the things that were the rubber meets the road. We finally got onto our feet, and we're doing very well because we've been able to sustain our enrollment, and we've been able to be very frivolous with our money and make sure that we're spending it in the right direction. Even with conservative budgeting, full-mill levy, equalization funding, and robust PPR increases have allowed CMA to increase teacher salaries comparable to other charter schools in El Paso County, resulting in a higher teacher retention rate and better student outcomes. This... These increases have aligned with the past two years of PPR increases, such now that these salary increases are sustainable in the out years. One of our biggest things that we've accomplished at the beginning of... Or at... Well, beginning at the end of FY '24, CMA now funds a board established Fund 43 with any portion of year-end net income margin over 5% to pay capital outlay and other RMM activities related to this facility. We continue to engage our... With our finances, a third-party contract and audit partner to review financial processes, identify inefficiencies, and recommend best-practice controls. We've established monthly finance oversight briefings, including board members, the Executive Director, FSO, to review budget to actual reports and authorize corrective actions. We provide financial literacy training for key staff to ensure accurate forecasting, grant compliance, and transparency reporting to stakeholders. One of our next steps in accountability, we're going to publish and adhere to revised Unified Improvement Plan, our UIP, with measurable targets for each grade band, quarterly milestones, and assigned owners. Host teacher data dives to maintain shared ownership of progress and solicit feedback on identified and emerging challenges. Review all financial and academic metrics of monthly leadership team meetings and board meetings. Big question that the DAC, that I thought was very good, is what does Colorado Military Academy bring to D-11's portfolio of charter schools? Well, we already have 300 of the D-11 students out of our 628, so we identify with their population. What do we bring to D-11? Military-inspired leadership development, emphasizing character development that focuses on the four pillars of Civil Air Patrol: integrity, respect, volunteer service, and excellence. Expanded aerospace and cadet programs through Civil Air Patrol, Space Force Cadet Corps, and AeroLab, preparing students for college, the military, technical careers, and flying. We're providing alternate education focused on catering to the vast military community in Colorado Springs. We, CMA, provide a soft place for our military kids to land. We are 42% military kids, and we are over 40% military veterans, spouses, and reservists. So we understand them. What can D-11 do to support CMA's success? Well, we'll have an authorizer that understands us, an authorizer that appreciates our environment, that appreciates our challenges, appreciates the military child, appreciates the constant moving, the 150-student mobility rate that we experience every year of children moving from state to state, that will... This doesn't matter how well you try to educate your children. Being a mom of two young ladies that got to PCS quite a few times, it doesn't matter, they need... They will have gaps. And it feels wonderful to be in a district that truly understands those and is not constantly penalizing us for that. So that's one of the... One of the main successes, we feel, of being part of D-11. Provide... D-11, we feel, will provide collaborative professional development aligned with military leadership ethos, engagement, and teaching strategy training for teachers, assisting with expanding research-based and data-driven practices in all areas when need arises. We look forward to the possibility of the wonderful networking just sitting here tonight and listening to all the amazing things that are going on. It's so great to step outside charter school land and see what a district brings and be reminded of all the camaraderie, all of the activities, and all of the opportunities. Grant access to district-wide data analysis tools and streamlined administrative support during authorizer transition, support efforts for targeted grants for building support, dual-credit expansion, technology integration, and others as needed arises. We'd love to pair CMA leaders with veteran D-11 principals for mentorship and best-practice sharing, and anything else that we can gather, glean from your wonderful staff. We are a Purple Star school. We are the only one in Charter School Institute. We are the only Purple Star school. And so, again, with that 150-student mobility rate, it is great to be among a district, a community that truly understands our challenges, encourages us, motivates us, and is able to mentor us. Now, for the big question. How are you addressing your academic challenges? Oh, I could write a book of the things that we've changed and the things that we've increased and the things that we've actually implemented. But I'll start with implementing data-informed instruction via BOY MOY NIWA MAP and Analysis, targeted teacher feedback and one-on-one coaching sessions, identifying gaps in teacher practices, both technical and pedagogical. So our teachers, before I became the school leader, going on my second year, we had one principal, and I... Forgive me if I have to repeat myself, but I'm really proud of this point. Bringing up our two associate principals has not only allowed to have that chain of command that we all... I thoroughly enjoy. I don't like having a stovepipe anywhere I work. But that has allowed those teachers who desperately want the coaching, they want the mentoring, and they want the leadership, it has allowed for that to happen because I have an individual on each floor, my pre-K through sixth and my seventh through 12th, to be able to observe, do the instructional coaching, look at each teacher as an individual, find out what they need professional development-wise, because I love to grow my own leaders. I love to grow my own teachers. I love to promote from within. And so having those associate principals in that place, they are allowed to do that. And it's given the teachers so much more freedom. It's given them so much more motivation to do self-improvement, to look at what they're doing in their classes, not only being coached, but being praised for what they're doing day-to-day. It's allowed a lot of those things. We deploy Tier 1 and Tier 2 interventionist strategies for targeted academic support in classrooms, ensuring support for both teachers and students, using the Five Dimensions Evaluation Framework and following-up coaching to enhance teacher practice. We're convening curriculum review, teams to revise scope and sequence to be aligned with standards, enhancing academic rigor at all levels. That's one of our strategic plans for Goal 1. Enhancing PBIS practices to ensure student well-being, Strategic Plan Goal Number 2. Expanding SLL practices for both teachers, mental health first aid training, and student sources of strength to assist with statewide mental health crisis. That's part of our Strategic Plan Goal Number 2. Our curriculum we are adopting has embedded ELL interventions and enrichments to support our diverse population while providing rigor for all students, including GT. How do we plan to address low participation in our state assessment? Yes, year three for participation. I've never gotten a failing score for a 94.7, but we did last year. So that's what our score was. And I can honestly tell you that our... Our practice of making sure that our opt-out system was correct, making sure our parents were informed, it was nonexistent before last year. It just... It just didn't happen the way it's supposed to do... It's supposed to. And so we've developed our own internal mechanisms and monitoring systems to make sure that that does not happen again. With this year, starting this year, we are doing... We've launched the family communication so that the families... It's very important, as you know, for the families to understand what state testing is. Why do we do it? What does it bring back to the school, to the district, to the kids, to the teachers? So we make that abundantly clear, you know, through all social medias, through open houses, whatever we need to do. We make sure they understand the proper opt-out procedures, and they're followed in here too, to identifying the... Correcting the gaps in administrative errors because that's what ours was this past year. We did not code kids correctly. And I take complete accountability for that. It's not going to happen this year. We're integrating testing windows into the master schedule and minimizing academic and extracurricular conflicts and the testing fatigue that a lot of cadets and children feel this time of year. The PBIS efforts for students for attendance and test effort was phenomenal this year. They really enjoyed that piece. We got a piece of that from Mr. Kilroy. I don't know if he's here right now, but he's already started to mentor and lead us. Tracking and research, excuse me, tracking and reaching out to missing students to ensure full cohort participation. We may or may not Uber kids to school to make sure they tested. We have our SPD file next week that we're going to review to make sure everybody is coded properly and that we've got all of our... All of our cadets and students accounted for. I feel very confident in our new system to make sure it's foolproof to that we do not receive anything less than a 95. Hopefully, 100 is my goal. Next... Next point I'd like to address is are we planning to continue growing enrollment? Currently, we have waitlists for 3rd, 6th, 5th, 9th, and 10th grade. Be at mind, we are a smaller school, but we have... We have those waitlisted right now, and we're working with our best with our families to make sure that we can... We can actually, you know, get seats for those students as long as we're able to handle it because we do like to keep our classroom sizes at a certain level so that we keep our teaching and our learning all at the highest level. We're executing targeted marketing campaigns in community open houses and showcases. We've... Just to draw enrollment, we've... For the first time in... Since we've opened, we have commercials. We've really marketed that. We've sustained enrollment... Our sustained enrollment has been the highest this year than it has been since the school opened, which is... May not be huge numbers, but it's huge numbers to us because we used to lose a lot and not get those same kids back. So we're actually able to organically grow in our kids and our population. We have established partnerships with Peterson Space Force Base and leveraging alumni networks. We are a part of the AMSCA's organization. That's the American Military Schools, Colleges, and Universities. And once you're nominated into the AMSCA's Association, they recognize you as a military school. Our kids have already received over $2 million in scholarships. We have one of our... One of our students here now that received a full ride to Norwich University, the Citadel. And there's a lot of other schools that are already gaining... We're gaining ground with. So our kids are recognized. We're very small, but we, out of our graduating class last year, four of ours all went to service academies. We're expanding our world language, fine arts, STEAM, and junior and senior offerings to reduce dropout rates. We're utilizing personalized tours and digital outreach strategies, marketing through local news sources and social media campaigns. So we do plan to grow, but we want to grow... We don't want to grow fast, we want to grow smartly. We want to make sure that our education, the quality of our education, our classrooms, our facility does not degrade by trying to grow too fast. We love our culture, and we want to protect our culture that we have built through CMA. How has your... How... Excuse me. How has your change in leadership supported academic success? I've already spoke a little bit about our APs. Our curriculum, like I said earlier, was very outdated. There is virtually not enough professional development going on. And the beautiful part about our professional development is it's based off of the observations that the coaching that is done in the class, the observations that are done in the class are all brought back. We discuss them. We try to pinpoint exactly what the needs are for the teachers so that it's not just PD where you're checking a box. It's actually PD that the teachers are asking for, that they obviously need. And then also, on the student side, observing the students. What are their needs? What are their gaps? What are they missing from their teachers? What do we need to provide? And so that PD is custom-built for our teachers and their needs.
So Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for the feedback. Let me give an opportunity for the board to see if they have any additional questions at this time. You've answered quite a few of the questions that DAC posed. So let me give an opportunity in the interest of time to make sure that the board has some questions that they want to ask you. Board, any questions? Director Bankus?
You may have addressed this, and I didn't catch it. Do you have mid-year data with these new inventions, interventions that you've put into place?
Ma'am, we will, once this testing is over with.
So you do end-of-year? You don't do mid-year?
We do mid-year, and basically, I... Would you like to speak to that? He has our... He has all of our data. This is my middle-through-high school Associate Principal.
Let me just pull it up here, just a second. So I'll give you the numbers, and then I'll talk a little bit to it. So as far as our elementary math, we're in the 50th percentile. We are looking at our reading is in the 44th percentile at the elementary level. We're pretty low in our math at the secondary level. That's the 30th percentile. We are working on that.
You're going too fast. What was... Secondary level?
The secondary level for math is the 30th percentile.
30%.
And then, we are in the 40th percentile in reading for the secondary level. So right now, we have an interventionist. She's the Dean of Student Success is her title, but she works with the... Can't remember the grant off the top of my head. Ninth-grade success grant. She targets those ninth graders, making sure that they are successful at the high school level. She is working with the math teacher directly. She... Our math teacher is a new hire. She has a lot of experience. Our past math teachers, to be quite candid, have not been qualified enough at the high school level. So we hired new for that this year. So our math scores unfortunately are very low at the high school level, but we are working through it, and we are working on it.
Is that a double dose of math? A regular math class, then an intervention of math? Or is it math class, and then kids are pulled out?
They do their regular core math class, so Algebra 1 all the way up through Precalculus. And then, she will target them specifically in specific skills. We have a freshman seminar. So she works specifically with all the freshmen, and then kids who need the additional support at the other levels, specifically sophomore, junior, and senior. She will come in, and she supports them individually. She has a separate room that she'll do small groups with them.
So they're getting both, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Gotcha, okay. And that's been in practice just this year?
Just this year, yes, ma'am.
Do you have scores from last year in math for this grade level?
I do not. I do not have those scores available.
So you have no way of measuring if these interventions are actually being effective?
Well, so we do have the data. I just did not prepare for it. I apologize.
Okay. Oh, and the second question was about teacher turnover. I know this is only your second year, but teacher retention?
So this is our... My second year, and this is... We just got all of our ITRs back. We have 100% teacher retention with... Minus the teachers that are married to military spouses that are moving this summer.
And what percentage is that?
Only... There's only one, one that's a military spouse. And then, we have... We have a few teachers that are moving to do different professions, but everyone else, the majority, is returning.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board at this time? Director Ott?
Thank you. I'm curious about the state testing window and CMAS and what your participation is this year.
So we believe that if we're not 100%, we're going to be very, very close. Again, you know, our problem in last year was... It wasn't so much the participation, it was properly coding the students. When the students would leave the school, if they were PCSing, especially when they're going overseas, which we do have a lot of students that go overseas, they don't always... Often get coded correctly. And we've gotten into the practice where we... Every time a student leaves, they get coded. So this year, once we get our SPF file next week, we should be able to find out exactly where we're at, or very close to where we're at. I feel like with our internal processes that we've created as a school and as an administration, that we are... That is not... No longer going to be an issue for us.
Is that it?
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other questions. I'm going to just give a couple of minutes summary on my visit to your school. Thank you for taking the time to visit with me. I spent a good three hours in your school that morning, an hour and a half just having a one-on-one conversation with you, and then followed by... a one-on-one conversation with you and then followed by visiting to the classrooms as well. My first takeaway was I've never visited your building, so this was the first time I even visited your school. So you've got the curb appeal, the entrance to the school, that is visually appealing. It's a relatively new building. You purchased the, financed in purchasing the building, so that, I mean, you've got a good facility out there, a modern facility with all the needs for, taken care of for our students. There were some questions. Two years back, you came in front of the board at that time to be considered under the D eleven portfolio of schools, and at that time, there was some concerns about your financial viability and also your leadership, leadership situation at the school. Both of those have been addressed now. You are in a financially more stable position, you have a new chief finance officer, and the leadership that you bring in along with the assistant principals that are there, it's a new structure. So I think those questions have been answered. You are in the process of getting there to the next step. The concern was your school performance framework, which got dinged by one level down because of low participation. But again, you quoted some of the students wrong and you figured out that situation and that has been addressed. It is a unique opportunity. When I visited your school, I saw high student engagement, I walked into some of your classrooms. The science classes was taught with rigor. I saw students behaving, you know, there was clear expectations as to how students should behave. I spent some time in your cafeteria, you've got a new program out there where you bring a form to table out there in terms of healthy food for our students as well. You've got a good facilities in the back that you showed me, the playground area and everything like that for the students. And the civil air patrol that you provide is something that is unique, not only to Colorado Springs, but for the entire country, for what I understand. And even DAC report indicates that there is value in you, what CMA offers in bringing you into the portfolio of schools. And thanks for the comprehensive report as to what you are doing to address the academic challenges in your school. So overall, my takeaway was that you guys are working to improve the academic scores in your schools as well with the targeted intervention, tier one, tier two. You even talked about bringing an outside contractor to help with the professional development of your teachers. And if you address the participation issues, then that is at least going to pull your school from priority improvement to improvement right away. That, those were my main takeaways. I know that you mentioned that being under CSI, CSI doesn't provide you any of the networking or the support that you desire, and being under a local, local district like us would provide you the special education support and the networking and using some of the support systems that we have, that would be beneficial for you. Some of your students and parents that commented said the same thing, that athletic programs, things of that nature, that you may not have a robust athletic program, we may be able to provide some of those supports. So thank you for the time in visiting with me and touring your school as well. Before I call for the roll call, looks like Director Ott has another question. Director Ott?
Well, more of a statement, I just, I want to acknowledge the testimonials that folks had today, and also note that the materials, additional materials that were asked for, thank you for providing those. Encouraged by your comments tonight about the changes you're making at the school, I still do have academic concerns, given that it's year three. For my part, I'm also concerned about the audit. I'm, I imagine it will be timely this year because certainly that impacts the district as well. And so for me, I realize part of the reason we would like to have a, an additional charter school is for enrollment purposes. My concerns still about what's best for the district, I will probably, I will be voting no, but I imagine that you are going to be moving ahead and I am hopeful for your school in its achievements in the next year. So I, for myself, I would just prefer to see the improvements before we take you on as a charter, and that's the reasoning for my vote. I would prefer to, to see you again in two years, but I understand that probably won't be the decision, and so good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Bankus, you have a brief comment?
Yeah, this is a question actually for us. So they're on the clock for the third year. What is our obligation? Are the sponsor of a charter school that's not performing?
Advisor, the school's accountable to its own performance. So the school is on the clock with the state. We then, if the state were to recommend the school close, then we would abide by the state. As, as you're entering an alternative governance model here by authorizing, and so your job is to then just make sure that they adhere to the nature of that authorization. I see Mr. Miller, Brad, you want to comment anything more on that? Is there anything else to add?
Thank you for the opportunity, Brad Miller, but no, there, he said it exactly correct.
So we have no obligation other than to be the authorizer, and the state is, as in providing extra support or? Providing extra support.
Yeah, you, you're not voting as an operator of a school, you're voting as an authorizer of a school, of which then they are accountable to those standards. The state has not really shown a proclivity to closing schools that are on the clock, particularly if schools are able to make adjustments and show that they are moving in a new direction. We briefed Galileo as a community school earlier, we'll be briefing Mitchell next week to the state board. It's just a very similar experience of a little less autonomy and a little bit more scrutiny on the actions that you're taking. I believe Ms. Roberts today shared what would have been well-received at the state if she were making that brief to the state.
If I might, I've already seen a version of our charter contract, and as you know, I've worked with some of the other charters in the district. The version that you've got will hold the school accountable and to standards to beat or exceed the district's performance and so forth, and you'll have mechanisms within your contract to enforce that.
And so do we, do we hold them accountable?
Internally, because you, you, you care about the district performance framework and those sorts of things, but then externally, the CDE will hold them accountable if it, if it needs to.
Another example would be when you come for contract renewal, which has happened several times this year, I believe Eastlake and Community Prep, I think Roosevelt was last year. When they make their request for contract renewal, if the board did not feel that they were meeting a level of achievement consistent with the board's expectation, then you would choose to not renew that contract.
I see.
I would, I would just add, remember the board does review charter APRs, our annual performance reuse every year, every year, academic performance as well as fiscal management is a part of that. And so every year, you would be making a decision whether to extend their contract beyond their original contract amount, so there are multiple touchpoints for accountability to follow up on any concerns.
Thank you. That's a question. Thank you.
Director Nelson?
I wanted to take a minute to thank the DAC for all of their support. It is so greatly appreciated to have those team members digging in and doing this research on our behalf and giving us that report, really, really beneficial. So just wanted to make sure you knew you were appreciated. And then I wanted to explain why I will be voting a very excited yes to bringing you guys on board into the District Eleven family. I think the unique offering you bring to our community is outstanding, and we're fortunate to have your school in Colorado Springs. And clearly, families are choosing your school, your enrollment, I was looking, has increased the last couple of years, and you're talking about waitlists. We have the opposite problem in a lot of our schools. So I am excited to bring you into our portfolio, and we recognize that educating children can be a challenge with closing gaps and making sure that everyone is on great level, and it is a very, it's, it's an arduous task, but it's very meaningful and it's important work, and we are facing the same challenges in many of our own schools. And so we recognize that it is a difficult challenge ahead of all of us and hope that as a community, we can do better for our kids and improve outcomes for kids in all of our schools, and I just wish you the best of luck and let us know how we can support you in that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dr. Carey, last remark from the board before roll call.
This has nothing at all to do with the current agenda item, but I would like to remind the board that, at least on paper, we have two hours and fifteen minutes remaining of business.
Yep.
If we go past eleven PM, we have to vote to do that. We've been here for five hours already. So I would, I would just strongly encourage board members and presenters alike to be thoughtful about time, because there's a lot of people who are still waiting for their business to be presented up to the dais.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the reminder. The board had a good discussion about it. I want to remind the community as well, couple of things here. You are in priority improvement because of your participation rate. That's two years in a row, and you have taken steps to address that, okay? That's the number one thing. So you are progressing in the right direction out there, so. Yep, with that, roll call please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. The contract for the Colorado Military Academy Charter School was approved by the board. Next item on the agenda is construct contract, which is a modification to contract C twenty twenty-five dash one zero zero one, Phase One Preconstruction Services to renovation of Palmer High School. Director Ott, can you please make the motion for action item G?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education approves the contract C twenty twenty-five one thousand one, modification to Phase One Preconstruction Services for the renovation of Palmer High School at a firm fixed price of twenty-eight million eight hundred twenty-eight thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars. This phase of work will begin June second, twenty twenty-five, and end October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Moved and seconded, the board previously approved contract C twenty twenty-five dash one zero zero one to Adolphson, Adolphson and Peterson for Phase One Preconstruction Consulting Services in partnership with the RTA and Perkins Eastman Design Team for the initial phase of the construction management general contractor contract. Tonight's request is for a modification to that contract, and I see somebody from Facilities, I'm going to go directly to her superintendent.
Yeah, I just, Ms. Hotelin works in our capital team, she's not in Facilities. I've heard that a couple of times, I just want to correct for Ms. Hotelin and her team and the work that they represent. Couldn't be more excited, this is a continuation and contract modification, but we're ready. Ms. Hotelin?
Thank you, and good evening, board. I will do my best to keep it brief and try to shave off a little bit of time for your evening. I know you've had a long night, so appreciate your dedication and hard work here. We're doing an early funding request, this is to get our construction team going for twenty-eight million, so this is getting the demo permits, working towards the east wing demolition for the master plan that you've been seeing presented over the past six months or so, and then doing the enabling work to make that happen. That means we're taking the auxiliary gym and we're setting it up as an alternate kitchen. We're moving teachers from classrooms in the wing that is going to be demolished and putting them into the nineteen thirty-nine building and other parts of the nineteen sixty-eight building and the library, other wings. We're making sure they have the electrical requirements met that they need to work in those areas, setting up some cubicles and some other workstations for administrative staff. Our team has been meeting with Ms. Burke, the principal of Palmer, and she has been an amazing support with her team to get everybody ready and all those logistics done for the athletic teams and everybody to have the practice fields and areas that they need while construction gets started. So again, that orange building you see there is the area that is going to come down starting this summer. We actually got the permit approved today for the temporary closure of Boulder and for the lane adjustment on Weber. I know, June third, it starts. So the temporary closure of Boulder is approved, we got the permit today. So I will say that is a huge credit to the construction team, RTA and Perkins Eastman. They've been doing a lot of pre-planning meetings with the city, with the traffic engineering teams, with the Pike's Peak Regional Building Department, with the fire department. We walked with the fire department at Jenkins Different Project today, but Palmer came up there too, and they've been very pleased with the communication from all of the teams and answering the questions, and they lightning fast approved their request for Boulder to be temporarily closed so that we can have a laydown area for our construction materials. The geothermal field will be going in the field behind Boulder, and so they'll be working towards that as well. And then for the enabling work, again, we'll be moving our staff over into other areas and providing alternative places for the cafeteria for our students to eat and continue classes while construction begins. So we're here today to work towards those pieces. This is what the precast structure exterior is going to look like. We are working next week through the bidding process of getting a precast team hired that'll be making the pieces for Palmer High School. Part of the reason we need Boulder temporarily closed for construction is because to get these pieces on a truck into that location and then off loaded with a crane and put in place, they can only put two pieces per truck, and we need about four hundred trucks. So we'll have continuous semi-trucks coming in through, and that way we'll keep students and the community away from that traffic on Boulder, so. Again, May, we have safing off equipment, we have archival items being moved, we're working with Skylar Blanchard, the archivist for the district. So we'll be moving a huge library of beautiful yearbooks from Palmer High School out to our archives out there. We'll be relocating the kilns so they can keep firing clay. Again, just getting all the odds and ends and pieces put together so that school can continue how it needs to, staff is a place to be and is comfortable while we do construction. We're starting abatement in June, and then the building demo will be in June and July. And the most exciting thing is the groundbreaking that'll be May twelfth at three fifteen. We hope to see you all there. So our request tonight is for contract mod so that we can fund Adolphson and Peterson to start purchasing materials in advance of construction, so they'll have everything ready to go, and so that we can hit the ground running on getting all the barricades up, protecting the site, and demoing the building. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for the quick presentation at this time.
Yeah, you're welcome.
You mentioned temporary closure of Boulder, how long is it closed for?
Two and a half years.
That's a temporary closure?
That's a temporary closure. The permit has to be renewed every ninety days.
Okay. Well, hopefully that-
For two and a half years.
By two and a half years, it becomes a permanent closure. People get used to finding other ways to commute around.
That would be ideal, yes. We do also have parking, we have an agreement with the YMCA for eighty spots. We'll be giving up, it's hard to see, it's underneath the timer, but we will be giving up the northeast lot of parking for Palmer for our construction team to have their offices and their trailers set up there, to have their permanent location and headquarters for their work, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
There is also, Dr. Weiss put together a comprehensive communication plan that is happening in the surrounding community with the parents, with the stakeholders, with the students.
Correct.
Not only about the construction efforts that are happening, but also letting the student body know what is coming up as far as next year goes, how is school going to operate while construction is going on? So thank you, I think- operate while construction is going on? So thank you. I think that report came to the board. The rest of the board is aware of it, but thanks for putting together, Dr. Weiss and your team as well. Kudos to what you are doing. You are going over and beyond what is necessary through your town hall meetings and everything in engaging the community.
We'll be walking the neighborhood with door knockers. Adolphson and Peterson is printing those now, so we'll be setting those at all of the local businesses so they know who to call if they're upset about trash in their front yard. It should be that guy, that guy right there, Grant.
Okay. Thank you. Director Nelson?
I was just really curious quickly on the geothermal field. That is for heating the building, correct?
Correct.
That is not anything to do with the future field that is going-
That is correct. Yep.
It's just called a field.
That is all HVAC related, so it all has to do with the heating ventilation of the building. Basically uses the earth as a battery to heat the building. It's super efficient. This building is geothermally fed, so it's just a very efficient energy savings way to deal with heat and air in a building.
I'm sure that Director Ott finds that very exciting because she's always passionate about that kind of work. Thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, Director Ott gave a thumbs up. I don't think there is any further questions. We saved about 22 minutes up here, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Roll call please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, so the contract modification was approved by the board. Thank you for the work that you guys put together. The next item on the agenda is contract approval to purchase four real estate properties adjacent to Palmer High School. Director Bankus, can you please make the motion for action item G5, contract approval to purchase four real estate properties adjacent to Palmer High School?
I move the Board of Education authorizes Chief Operations Officer Chris Odom to effectuate the purchase of four real estate properties located at 219 East St. Verine, Colorado Springs, Colorado, 80903, 221 East St. Verine, Colorado Springs, 80903, 430 North Weber, Colorado Springs, 80903, and 429 North Nevada Avenue, Colorado Springs, Colorado, 80903.
Second.
Moved and seconded. The board received a briefing on this matter during executive session. On April 30th, Superintendent Call, additional information for the board at this time and for the public as well.
Yeah, I have Chief Odom here to address the mechanism and the processes.
Thank you Superintendent Call. Good evening, Board of Education. I just have a couple minutes just to kind of give you an overview. Acquiring these properties allows the master plan vision to be fully realized. It gives the district the control of two city blocks to consolidate, to connect, and to modernize in ways that would not otherwise be possible. Would you show the next slide, please, Melissa? There are benefits of having a unified campus. It includes enhanced student safety and supervision. It increases synergy that a connected campus fosters while it would enable shared space to occur for students, staff, and the community. It offers a future enhanced athletic field opportunity and an athletic building opportunity. So why now? These properties are currently housing residential apartment space and business office space. They are investment properties and they could go on the market at any time at a moment's notice, so we need to move swiftly. This would allow design and planning to occur for future execution. Next steps, if you approve tonight, we would finalize, receive appraisals to help establish a fair market value. We would engage with our real estate attorney to contract and facilitate contract negotiations resulting in a fair market price and negotiated optimal tenant terms while balancing D11 liability. Once contract negotiations are finalized, a board resolution will be brought forward for your approval and funding to go to close. Funding is out of the cap reserve account, not the COP funding for this Palmer endeavor and upon your approval, our contract attorney will begin contract negotiations with each of these property owners. That concludes my overview for what we're doing now and next steps. Any questions that I could address at this time?
Thank you, Ms. Odom. Just because this question has come up in the public, maybe you or somebody on the district administrative staff can address, there are some questions about the historic nature, historic nature of these properties. Could you clear up the misconceptions surrounding that?
I've got Dr. Weiss coming forward. He's been doing the research.
So the public are aware of it because we are getting media-related questions too on that?
Absolutely. So we are aware that these properties sit within the historic Weber-Wasatch Neighborhood District. They themselves are not on the registry, but they are part of an important neighborhood. So we have proactively been reaching out to the Historic Preservation Board. We actually have a presentation with our architecture team scheduled for June 2nd to give them an update on, excuse me, just what we're doing to preserve the history at Palmer in general as part of this neighborhood and then to have a discussion about how they want and would like us to think about moving forward with these properties. There's no hurry to take these properties down. We have lots of time to engage, to listen, and to figure out what the best plan is. There are options such as finding someone who's willing to relocate these properties to another place in the city. So there's a lot. We're really open and we want to continue having these conversations with stakeholders.
Okay, thank you. Board questions? I don't see any and Director Ott hasn't, doesn't have any questions either, so I'm going to, roll call.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The contract to purchase the four Palmer properties has been-
Thank you very much.
Has been approved by the board. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is amendment of the fiscal year 2425 budget. That is this year's budget, current year. Dr. Carey, can you please make the motion for action item G6?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education adopts Resolution 2025-31, appropriation levels budgeted for fiscal year 2024-2025.
Second.
Moved and seconded. The board received information regarding this resolution during the April 16th special meeting. Superintendent Call, any additional information?
Nothing further.
Nothing further, board. Any questions before roll call? Seeing none, roll call please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The amended fiscal year 2425 budget has been approved by the board. Director Haley, can you please make the motion for the next agenda item, which is action item G7, Policy AG?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education repeals Policy AG.
Second.
Moved and seconded. This, the board discussed options related to Policy AG when it came forward as a non-action agenda item during the April 2nd regular board meeting and had extensive conversation at the time. I see Dr. X here as well seated right there at this time. Superintendent Call, I'm going to invite Dr. X to the podium to present any additional information.
There's no additional information at this time.
Okay, the board had an extensive discussion about this and we considered the various options and what was in front of the board at this time. Any new information that the board wants to consider at this time, comments or questions that you may have? Director Ott?
Thank you. I want to note that the equity policy has never been just about race as some people would have public or you all believe. It's also about special education students, students with disabilities and it has always been, to me at least, more about the support than, and helping them meet the challenges to be successful in every way that they can be rather than differentiating our children negatively. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Nelson?
I just wanted to encourage the community to take a look at three policies if they are concerned about us repealing this equity policy. We speak to offering opportunities to all of our students and there's language about equitable practices in our Policy AD, which is our vision, mission, and strategic planning, our nondiscrimination equal opportunity policy, which is AC, and our equal educational opportunities policy, which is JB for the alphabet soup. So I just wanted to encourage concerned community members to go take a look at those policies. As a board, we feel that they cover what we need and feel very comfortable, I feel very comfortable repealing the equity policy. Thanks.
Director Jorgensen?
Just a quick question, quick question for Dr. X. When we are, when the employee handbook takes action and we're updating policy with cross-references and things like that, will we also be tasking you with this vote tonight to look at the cross-references of where Policy AG is mentioned in our policy and removing those cross-references? Is that part of this move? Yes, good evening Superintendent Call, members of the board. Apologies for not doing that last time. If you give us the directive to go in at the charge to do that, we would go back and remove those cross-references, yes. I just wanted to confirm, if we're removing the policy, then we need also to remove where it's cross-referenced. We would remove where it's cross-referenced- Thank you. From, with your charge, yeah.
Thank you. We've had extensive discussion about this. The feedback that I would give the community is, right now, the schools that are in need, we direct resources to the schools that are in need and those are the educational equity in practice that we implement at this time. Those practices will continue. Schools such as Galileo, Mitchell, Adams get additional support and resources from the board and the district and some of the other schools get the instructional empowerment support that comes with additional funding as well. So educational equity is still happening in school district based on the needs of the schools and the academic goals of the district. With that, roll call please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
No.
Okay. The motion in front of the board passes. The next is a student discipline matter that the board addressed in executive session. Director Jorgensen, can you please make the motion for action item G8, student discipline matter?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education affirms the decision of the superintendent to expel student A until January 20th, 2026.
Second.
Moved and seconded. The board reviewed this matter in depth with legal counsel during executive session earlier this evening. Seeing no further comments by the board at this time, roll call please, Ms. Olsen.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you. Which is affirming the decision of the superintendent to expel student A. Moving on to the non-action items on the agenda, the first one is student fees, fines, and charges for 2025, 2026 school year. This is coming for review in front of the board at this time as a non-action item.
Yeah, I'd like to let Ms. Call back lead the conversation and just frame how proud I am of all the team. This has much impact. I think there had been some unintended consequences, but all for all the right reasons. I think we've worked our way through that and I think Sherry will assuage any concerns that the board has heard from any community members or staff. Sherry?
Thank you Superintendent Call, members of the board. As you know, we bring forward a list of student fees and fines each year for your consideration and approval. We have been working over the past two years as part of a design thinking team to reduce and eventually eliminate almost all of our student fees in an effort to increase access and remove fiscal barriers for students who want to participate in both curricular and extracurricular activities and programs. I want to be clear, at no point did this group undertake this work as an effort to remove programs or opportunities for students from the district. In fact, it's exactly the opposite. We are trying to increase access. And so as we worked through this, you'll see a very minimal list of fees for this year. Fines did however remain in place for loss or damage and you'll see some of those indicated. There were just a couple of student fees left at the high school level that we weren't fully able to eliminate this year, but we did reduce those and fully expect that those will be eliminated for the following school year. This was really an opportunity as we dug into this work to prioritize within our central budgets and within our school budgets, really as a part of site-based budgeting, and get clear through lots of collaboration with teachers and community and in some cases even students. There were SAC and DAC members as part of this process about what are those opportunities that our students have told us that they really enjoy, want to participate in, and that are really important to our school communities to maintain and keep in place. And if those are priorities, then we need to align our resources to those. And what that means is identifying funding within school and central budgets that can support all of those opportunities so that we are no longer passing that cost along to families. We know that as schools and as central departments really dig into that work and identify those places where they can support many of these programs, there are also going to be some places where schools or departments might need a little bit of extra funding. And so we've worked very closely with Dr. Comfort and with the programmer, Scott Olson, in our IT department. We have created and tested a process for schools to request additional funds when they need them. So if a principal is working with teachers and we have identified, for example, a field trip that we really want to take students on and the school funds are just not there to make that happen, there's a fully electronic process that will go from teacher to principal to area superintendent to Dr. Comfort. And in a test case earlier this year at one of our high schools, we were able to provide the funding needed within about 48 hours. Dr. Comfort has identified that funding within the general fund budget. We have tracking mechanisms in place to ensure that once that funding is allocated to a school, it gets used for the intended purpose and we'll build in checkpoints to identify, did we get this right? Are the ways that we're allocating those funds correct in supporting student activities or do we need to come back to that design thinking process and continue to identify how we support these opportunities for our students, again, without passing the cost on to parents and families? Fundraising, of course, is also still an opportunity for schools and we'll work with principals and school leaders to ensure that we don't have schools that go from two fundraisers a year to 12. We know that's an impact on families and that's certainly not how we want to pass this along either. But we do fully anticipate that the board would be satisfied with the, all of the places that we have been able to- that we have been able to reduce and eliminate fees that we are passing along to students and families for this school year. I do strongly believe that what we brought you is a very minimal list of those last few pieces that we need. And in one more year, we'll be bringing forward things like food service, and that will be about it.
Thank you. And just for the audience, even when the board members are back there, the sound is piped in so we can hear. So thank you. Board members, questions? I see Director Nelson.
So when a student is in dance club and they are saying $20 for the T-shirt, is that still appropriate or under this new thing, like that would be covered?
If it's an optional purchase, so I'm going to use yearbook as an example, and I think this is one we talked about with the board last spring. If a student and a family chooses to purchase a yearbook, certainly that's still a fee that the family would take on. However, we want to ensure that when students are wanting to participate in dance club, that there is no fee to participate. If there's a T-shirt that is an optional piece, not part of a uniform, those sorts of things that a student keeps at the end of it, that may be something that a school could still charge for, but only those very optional pieces, not the activity of dance club itself.
Okay. And then another question example would be a field trip to Cave of the Winds, and there's a nominal charge for the parents to pay for that. Is that going away?
That is gone.
That's excellent. So parents, if you are getting information home about having to pay for a field trip, ask, because we maybe can help support that.
Yes.
It's just going to take time to get the word out to our staff, just letting them know, like, hey, we're going to cover this.
And there are a few field trips left on the books this school year that parents might still be paying a small fee for. This would begin in the fall with the beginning of the next school year.
Perfect. Thank you.
Director Hafley?
I just, thank you, I just want to be clear. Sorry, I'm getting a cold just sitting here.
I'm sorry.
My voice isn't great. Just so I'm clear, a kid takes a textbook, rips it up, they have to pay for that.
They're paying for it.
Correct. They take a school laptop, throw it in the sink.
They're paying for it.
They destroy a yonder pouch.
They're paying for it.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you for bringing this up. One of the questions that come up, and this will be a quick question from my side, is the support for the band, orchestra instruments, and things of that nature. But some of these fees that are being reduced, are those programs going to be supported adequately? And I think Dr. Comfort answered this in the past, if schools have needs, they can reach out to you. Maybe you can clarify that, Dr. Comfort.
Yeah, I will, as area superintendent Callback was made clear, if you need money for a reasonable thing, we have a process, but if you need it now, reach out, we will fund that. To your specific question, President Malpackham, as Superintendent Gollum has stated on multiple occasions, we have actually established a VAPA budget. Part of that budget is actually an instrument replenishment program and plan. And so that's something in the past where we've always had to come with one-time money and try to do things. Now we'll have a budget, doesn't mean it will cover everything, but we will have a plan to address that. And yes, band, marching band, high school things, we are not in any way wanting to limit or diminish what happens. If you need money, all you need to do is ask.
Okay. Thank you.
With that comment, I'd like to call out Kim Kincaid, because she's sitting there, because her first job in leading visual performing arts for the district was to put an RFP in place for equipment repair. We have to treat our equipment with care, and if a child destroys it, that's a different conversation. But we can't just have them age out and then say we don't have money for kids to play instruments.
Thank you. Appreciate the feedback. I think this will come as an action item at a future board meeting before the end of the school year. Board, if you have any additional questions between now and then, feel free to reach out to administration and copy the rest of the board in on it as well. So we are all informed about what those questions are and what answers that are provided as well. Thank you. Appreciate this.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, we have several new charter school applications, the first one being East Hills Academy. Again, this is new information. Superintendent Gollum?
Yeah, just, as we just went through a charter transfer, these are new charter applications. The law now requires an 18-month cycle. So what you're hearing tonight for non-action would start the 26, 27 school year. So just for everybody who is always wondering what direction the district is going, I applaud the state for this law to allow charters to be able to establish both their vision and find their market. I would, I think you'll hear some very interesting ideas on how we think that we can continue to meet parent needs and student achievement. Dr. Comfort?
Yeah. First, board, if I may make a recommendation, it's that Director Carey managed the board calendar from now on. He got us on track, and with one statement, we got on track, so that was great. Okay, a little bit, I might pay for that joke later, I don't know. A little bit about tonight, we did, we have had to construct a new process and timeline because this new law is new. And so we're bringing you, we have three new charter applications, as Superintendent Gollum stated, for the 26, 27 school year, to be clear about that. And we're bringing them to you now as early as possible. All three charters are going to provide very brief presentations. I'm going to request that the board hold questions. We are coming back for work sessions where you will be able to dig in and dive. You have the applications, as you've seen the applications, they are large. You need time to read and digest all of that, as does our internal review team, as does the DAC. So all of those processes are currently happening. So we're going to come back for a work session on May 28th, and then an action vote for these three charters, the final formal board meeting of the year. As a reminder, this is for 26, 27. I do want to shout out real quick our Director of Choice and Enrollment, Mr. Chris Kilroy. He has run point on all of this and managed this. Three applications at once is not something we're used to, especially at this time of year, so it has been a heavy lift both of Mr. Kilroy as well as the teams. And so we'll get started tonight with the team from East Hills Academy, they're going to come up again, give a brief conversation, and then we will answer all of your questions come work session in a couple of weeks.
Good evening, Directors of the D11 Board of Education and Superintendent Gollum. My name is Dana Jamian, and I'm very honored to be here with you tonight to share this proposal for the district that I grew up in and call home. For context, I'll begin by sharing my own story and how it's led me here today. This is a picture of a four-year-old boy who won the lottery. I was born in the Middle East, and my parents moved to the US when I was less than a year old because of the Gulf War. We ended up moving here just a few blocks away from Memorial Park where this picture was taken. My parents still live there over 30 years later. When this picture was taken, school choice didn't exist in Colorado Springs unless you could pay for a private school. It just so happened that the year that I was going into kindergarten, which was 1995, the first charter school in Colorado Springs was set to open. My mom heard about Cheyenne Mountain Charter Academy, which is now Vanguard, for one of the school's founders, Linda Carroll, who was just here with us earlier tonight, and along with Deborah Cole, who was also a founder of that school. My name happened to be drawn in the lottery, and I had the good fortune of being the first generation of K-8 charter students in Colorado Springs. I had no idea that the education I received was anything special. It was all I knew. So I hadn't experienced anything different until my freshman year at Palmer in the IB program, where my Vanguard classmates and I were placed in junior math and were well ahead of our peers in other subjects. It was very humbling. So I was 14 years old when it hit me, how did I, an immigrant whose second language is English, who grew up in a part of town that people still don't speak highly of, happen to end up at one of the top-performing schools in Colorado? I'm a proud D11 graduate, and I loved my time at Palmer, even though my teammate Reggie Jackson caught more passes than I did, and for some reason got more playing time, but I'm over it. The great teachers I had in my four years of IB built and completed the excellent education foundation that started at Vanguard and prepared me to be accepted and receive a scholarship to attend the University of Pennsylvania. I moved back and signed my first contract right here in D11 at Early Colleges with Keith King, who was a mentor and friend. I co-founded Colorado Early Colleges in Parker, then served as head of school at CSCA, also here in D11. I'm going to share some screenshots from the SPF, which is publicly available, of results at these schools. CEC Parker received the prestigious John Irwin School of Excellence Award, which is the highest award a school can receive from the state of Colorado. It received that every year since it was eligible. As you can see on the bottom half, academic achievement was rated exceeds every year in every available category and subcategory in ELA and math. Academic growth for math jumped from approaching to meets to exceeds, and ELA jumped from approaching to meets. At CSCA, academic growth for elementary reading jumped from approaching to exceeds. Academic achievement also moved from approaching to meets. Third graders at grade level grew by more than a third. If you look at the bottom, the fourth graders at grade level almost doubled. These are the students that started with reading mastery in kindergarten and first grade in 2018. Cindy Will, who was here earlier tonight also, a James Irwin Elementary founder and principal, supported with the implementation of this program. I'd also like to note the dates on there, this growth occurred between 2019 and 2022 despite the pandemic. I shared research about reading mastery in that charter application that you all read from cover to cover, I'm sure, but I got to see these extraordinary results with my own eyes from my own students. I'm sharing all of this to show that East Hills is opening not only with years of experience, including a school startup, but with demonstrated results like these. East Hills will be well beyond green on the SPF and will facilitate similar student success. That said, East Hills will be much more than just a school with great test scores. Our vision is that all East Hills students will be prepared for a life of growing in character and knowledge by engaging in a rigorous, content-rich, broad-based curriculum. Children flourish when they have a deep understanding of our world and their place in it. The vision begins with the word "all" because we are committed to making East Hills accessible to all families who can't typically access school choice. We prepare students for a life of growing in character and knowledge, not just short-term compliance with behavior expectations and good grades. We accomplish this through our mission to kindle a love of virtue and knowledge. We do this by building character, teaching a quality curriculum, setting high standards, and fostering strong relationships. If we only have a strong academic program but don't form children in character, we're missing the mark. Character development isn't a box we check. It's a culture, and it begins with adults who embody high character. Students will daily reflect on core values and virtues and are recognized for good character, which is shaped by hundreds of little moments every day. East Hills is a classical school based in the core knowledge, curriculum, and direct instruction with a commitment to excellence. Core knowledge is a comprehensive and transparent liberal arts framework used for decades in top-performing schools. It teaches a broad base of the highest-quality content, revisits and deepens concepts over time, is interdisciplinary, and closes achievement gaps. We'll also use direct instruction, a proven research-based method with decades of data behind it. It teaches explicit skill mastery and supports ability grouping. It's fast-paced and engaging, and it also closes achievement gaps. East Hills is modeled after True North Classical Academy, which I visited last year. It's a prestigious national blue ribbon charter and one of the highest performing in the country. Between the strong results that I shared and the strong results from True North, East Hills is set up to serve D11 students with the highest levels of excellence. Other important elements at East Hills include uniforms, cursive, art, music, and PE twice a week each, extended recess, three weeks of teacher training at the beginning of each school year, after-school homework hour, and a longer school day and school year, which amounts to an additional full year of instruction for students who attend K through eight. Although school choice has now existed for 30 years in Colorado Springs, many families with only one car or no cars, or families with certain work schedules, don't actually have school choice. East Hills is different because it will offer free busing for all students, which is essentially nonexistent in charter schools. This actually makes school choice a reality for a lot of families in D11. If I may add, I believe I had a little bit less than my full 10. Okay. Thank you. I will keep it within the 10. Before and after-school programs provide another layer of support for working families, and we've budgeted to supplement or in some cases fully cover those costs for many families. Summer academic programs will help catch students up who are below grade level, and we're working on funding for additional summer enrichment. Our calendar will be consistent and reliable, matching parent work schedules and reducing barriers by not having the random half or full day off every two to four weeks or early releases on Fridays. Aside from federal holidays and longer breaks, East Hills will be in session from 7:45 to 3:15, Monday through Friday, every week of the entire school year, except for two weeks. These steps make a classical education a real choice for many families who don't actually have a choice. East Hills is for all students, and our name was inspired from these neighborhoods in Southeast and South Central D11 where I grew up. There's clear community demand for East Hills, with over 600 signatures collected and over 100 for target-aged children. We'll mirror D11's demographics and provide small classes of 22 students per class with a teacher and a teacher's aide in each classroom. We'll start small with 88 students and gradually grow. Our founding board consists of five wonderful distinguished community leaders with wide-ranging expertise. Andy Barton and Shane Mombra are here with us tonight. Thank you. Additionally, over 30 local leaders, educators, businesses, and nonprofit partners have endorsed East Hills. You could see their letters of support in the charter application. The East Hills budget is comprehensive and sustainable, as demonstrated by the nine-year forecast, even though we were only required to submit a five-year forecast. It's conservative with a 10% contingency, will offer competitive teacher pay, and we have a board member with extensive experience and finance who will be our treasurer. We've already secured a quarter-million-dollar grant for a startup. I have also personally overseen a $4 million school budget for many years. I'm truly humbled at the opportunity to stand before you tonight, the opportunity to join the ranks of educators, several who are here tonight, who made an exceptional education possible for kids like me, who inspired me and who paved the way for me with sacrifices I'll never fully know to be here tonight. I played no part in the education I received as a child. It was a gift. But now I have an opportunity to bring the joy and passion of my own education, along with the experience and success at schools I've run, and an ocean of community support, to open a classical school of wonder and rigor in the part of town that I grew up in, to change the lives of other children in the same way that my life was changed. I'm grateful for the chance to present this vision to you as one of your own homegrown D11 students to serve more students in D11. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate the two board members being present here. As Dr. Comfort said, board, hold on to the questions. This will come as an extensive discussion at the May 28th board meeting. In the meantime, the DAC will also review all three applications and provide a report to the board, and the district will also provide a report to the board based on your review of the application package. Would that be a fair assessment?
Yep, that's correct. We're in the middle of our review, as is the DAC.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Okay. The next one is Spruce, again a non-action item, charter school applications, Spruce Community School. Okay, yeah, we'll invite them up.
Yep.
I'm Lauren Kazowski, founder of Spruce Community School. Thank you for this opportunity. District 11 offers families a range of educational options. Spruce will complement current district offerings with a model that's Spruce will complement current district offerings with a model that's innovative and unique in both D eleven and across El Paso County. We're eager to partner with the district to expand access to high-quality public education. Spruce will be the first project-based learning K eight school in D eleven where small classes create big impact, fundamentals meet hands-on discovery, academic excellence and social growth flourish together. Spruce will add value to District eleven in four key ways: close opportunity gaps, grow enrollment, develop top educators for our region, introduce a new yet proven model. Tonight, we'll share Spruce's story, our core beliefs, our unique education model, and how we will deliver strong outcomes for students, families, and this district. This is me in second grade. What you cannot see in this picture is the real human cadaver brain. I was given the opportunity to analyze and sketch this three-pound organ, an experience most don't have until medical school. The brain was part of a larger project on fear. In science, we explored how the brain responds to stress, ways we can stay calm. In literature, we studied how characters overcome fear. We brought it all together by writing, directing, and performing original plays at a local theater, sharing our own stories of courage with the community. This kind of education rooted in academic challenge and real-world connection changed my life. The expression on my face in this photo symbolizes the magic of lightbulb moments. My entire career has been centered around creating more moments like this for all children. My career in education began about a decade ago, teaching middle school math at Panorama. I was hired by Spruce's now board chair, Dr. Elizabeth Do-Mang, who's in the crowd tonight, to develop a new class for Harrison District Two, where students utilize design thinking to solve problems on their school campus. The class is still offered today and was expanded to Manito. I then taught elementary literacy in Denver Public Schools, focusing on supporting students with dyslexia. After seven years of teaching, I received my first graduate degree from Harvard's Graduate School of Education in Human Development and Psychology. Most recently, I led a high-performing project-based learning charter school in San Diego, recognized as a 2024 California Distinguished School for Academic Excellence and Closing Achievement Gaps. Now I'm working to bring the type of education typically limited to private school settings to all children through Spruce. At Spruce, our vision is together we inspire kind, curious, and courageous lifelong learners who are equally prepared to listen and lead. As a community, our actions are guided by our three values: kind, curious, and courageous. Spruce's mission mirrors D eleven's vision, empowering the whole student to profoundly impact our world. We chose the name Spruce because, like trees, our students grow in two directions: deepening their roots of self-discovery while extending their branches to enrich their community. Our educational model embodies our spruce tree metaphor. We strengthen students' roots through whole-child learning, developing students' interpersonal and intrapersonal skills. These skills form the necessary foundation for success in both learning and life. Our partnership with Harvard equips our staff with research-backed strategies to help students focus their attention, collaborate, manage stress, and communicate clearly. We grow students' branches through project-based learning. This hands-on approach connects classroom content to meaningful, real-world experiences through collaborations with local nonprofits and businesses. Our students create products, develop partnerships, and generate possibilities for Colorado Springs. Whole-child education and project-based learning go hand in hand. Projects require collaboration, which gives students daily opportunities to practice problem-solving and teamwork, skills that not only deepen engagement and support academic growth but are necessary for our evolving job landscape. Our defining feature is our community-based projects. These are not your typical science fair projects. Our projects begin with an authentic problem or passion. For example, a new school in need of a playground. Teachers then connect project goals to academic content through engaging the head, heart, and hands of our students. In our example, in writing, students would visit local playgrounds, interview families, and use their research to write their own safety manuals. In history, they explore how technology has changed the way children connect and communicate. In science, physics comes to life on a playground. They explore how swings build momentum or how the angle of a slide affects speed. In math, students learn measurement and scaling to create architectural diagrams for their final designs. Every project ends with an exhibition, where students, teachers, and community members come together to celebrate the learning process in their final product. Here, students would host a ribbon-cutting ceremony, presenting the playground they built to community with passion, poise, and presence. Projects are transformative learning experiences that students and teachers remember for the rest of their lives. Our hope is that one day, as you walk the streets of Colorado Springs, you'll see a mural, a garden, or even a playground, and hear someone say, "Spruce Kids made that." Our projects are made possible by our dedication to creating a strong foundation in math and literacy. We build that foundation through daily small-group instruction, evidence-based, CDE-approved, and Colorado-standards-aligned core curriculum, a hundred and eighty-plus hours of targeted teacher development every year, weekly data meetings to ensure every student grows. Our projects in whole-child learning are further supported by our commitment to electives. At Spruce, students have an elective every single day. They will participate in art, movement, theater, music, and a world language. Spruce was designed to offer something unique in the Pike's Peak region and within D eleven. Our class sizes are capped at eighteen, which allows for individualized instruction, caring relationships, and the ability to travel for field trips. Every K five teacher receives forty hours of Orton-Gillingham training, which has over a hundred years of data, supporting all students in becoming grade-level proficient readers. And with a longer school year, a hundred and eighty-one student days, we provide more time for students to master content and develop confidence. While our model is new to District eleven, it's not new to Colorado or the nation. Schools with similar educational models consistently outperform the state average on CMAS by ten to thirty points across all demographic and socioeconomic categories. All of these schools have waitlists. Spruce brings this same potential to families in D eleven. Like those schools, Spruce is focused on results. Our ambitious accountability plan outlined in our charter application supports academic, whole-child, and institutional goals. None of those outcomes happen by accident. We believe small classes and excellent educators are the key to student success. Spruce's staffing model reflects this with a nine-to-one student-to-staff ratio. Teachers receive ten days of pre-service training and ongoing support through coaching and daily collaboration. Through partnerships with the Public Education Business Coalition, Teach for America, and as Colorado College, an official learning lab school, will compensate teacher residents, pairing them with expert mentors in preparing the next generation of educators for Spruce and the region. In alignment with our educational model, Spruce hopes to open in central D eleven to have close proximity to downtown businesses and nonprofits for off-campus fieldwork opportunities. Spruce's student population will reflect D eleven's demographics, including FRL, special populations, and racial diversity. We're committed to access through targeted transportation routes and before-and-after-school programming. In central D eleven, we've built strong early momentum, with over six hundred signatures of support, including a hundred and sixty-three from families with three-to-six-year-olds, many of whom are here tonight. We plan to open in August 2026 with sixty-eight students and grow one grade level each year. The foundation of Spruce's support is in the dedicated group of individuals that form our founding board. Our board brings expertise in law, finance, education, and nonprofit leadership, and an unwavering commitment to serving D eleven families. Beyond family and government support, we've received twenty-eight letters from community leaders across sectors expressing support for opening Spruce. Spruce's budget was built from the ground up to reflect our mission and model. Every dollar, from staffing to curriculum to facilities, supports hands-on, whole-child learning. With support from financial experts and oversight by our CPA Board Treasurer, we've developed a balanced, seven-year plan with strong financial safeguards. We've already secured half a million in Year Zero funding to ensure a strong launch and a full kindergarten enrollment. At Spruce, we believe education isn't just learning by doing, it's learning by becoming. Our educational approach focuses on the people, the community members who utilize our projects, the teachers who foster care, and the students who discover their capacity to inspire positive change, and most of all, where students grow into kind, curious, and courageous people, ready to lead and serve their communities. Thank you for the opportunity to share Spruce with you. We are honored to grow something meaningful here together.
Thank you. Appreciate your presentation, and we will have an extensive discussion about this again at a later board meeting down the road. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Gateway for Success, our new charter school, Gateway for Success.
Yeah, we'll invite them up.
Sorry, I'm a little short. Gotta move the mic down. Hello. My name is Abby Moa, and I represent the PMG, which is the CMO that is working with Gateway for Success. Along with us, we do have board members attending virtually, and then we do have one attending with us here.
My name's Darcy Shining, and I'm a board member for Gateways to Success, and it's an honor to be here tonight. Thank you for your time, especially at this late hour. Appreciate you. Do I control these or no? You got it. Okay, thank you. Our mission at Gateways to Success is to empower and support students at risk through flexible, robust, alternative education. We provide additional support, recognizing each student's unique needs, to inspire and transform lives. Our primary goal is to prepare students not only for high school but also post-secondary success and to increase graduation rates, student retention, and academic success. Our school aims to serve diverse, low-income, and underserved students, students facing educational challenges, though we are happy to accept all students. Most students that enroll at our school come in with both credit and skill deficiencies. We aim to close the achievement gap and meet and exceed academic and personal goals. Teachers not only check in with students during each appointment, they also maintain consistent communication with parents to ensure that the student receives the necessary support and continues to make progress. Is that good? I don't know how to work that.
Chronic absenteeism is a prevalent issue, I think, throughout all of America, and so one of our goals is to increase and improve attendance and engagement. Here in Colorado, about three hundred or so students drop out each year. We did check the Colorado Department of Education website as well to confirm those numbers, and with our model, we want to ensure that the students are progressing. Students will have the opportunity to also take CTE courses, dual enrollment, to continue their education and progress. Throughout the year, at multiple events, every parent and each community member we spoke with expressed strong support and excitement for our model. When submitting the application, approximately one hundred and eighty-nine community members expressed their support and intent to enroll. Now we have more than two hundred and fifty to enroll, and in addition to that, a hundred plus more that actually support us. Nonprofits and organizations as well have supported us and are more than happy to help serve these students that we plan to serve.
Gateway for Success financial records will be maintained by the Charter Management Organization, which is Pathways Management Group. We will have an established, comprehensive system of checks and balances to ensure the integrity and transparency of all financial transactions. The board members will have the final oversight of all budgets, including major financial decisions or changes, ensuring alignment with the school's budget and strategic goals. For the next five years, each year's total personnel costs account for approximately fifty percent of the budget. We are committed to ensuring that our staff receive at least market-rate compensation for their roles, including benefits. This approach is designed to offer competitive wages, to minimize turnover, and to promote high staff retention.
Here as well are the budget assumptions for the next five years, enrolling a hundred and twenty-eight students the first year and increasing with a max capacity at three hundred students. We do hope to expand and open more centers and help all these students, as we are aware that other schools and charter schools have a waitlist and they are, parents are waiting for our model to open and be able to take their students in. To address financial challenges as well, we will monitor its cash flow regularly and take proactive measures to ensure it remains positive. The board will also review the budget and revise it if necessary to align with actual expenses and revenue. This may involve reallocating funds to prioritize areas and cutting back on nonessential expenditures. So we will attract and retain students by marketing and partnering with other organizations and schools that surround us. An important part that wasn't in the presentation is also that we want to work with the district schools, other schools. For students who are not doing well, who are at risk of dropping out, we want to help and transfer them to ours, help them catch up, and if they're ready, they can transfer back to their district schools or schools, because students want to graduate with their friends, and we understand it's really important to keep them in school. So if our goal is to really keep them enrolled and engaged, we are more than happy to do
So, why us? Our top priority is meeting each student where they're at. No two students in Colorado are exactly the same. So by providing project-based learning, our excellent educators and our top-notch staff will be able to help each student build genuine trust and connection with the staff and with their peers. We are committed to empowering these students to build the confidence and the assurance that they need to graduate. We are deeply committed to this community, and we strive to show that we listen to the community and we listen to each individual student. We hear their needs, and we're here to help. Again, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you for staying longer than anticipated and presenting to us again as the previous two. We will have an extensive discussion about this later in May. Thank you. Policy GBA, open hiring, equal employment opportunity. This is new information, Dr. X.
Yes, good evening. Policy GBA is included in your packet this evening. This policy has only some minor revisions, removing language as per guidance from federal decisions that have been made recently, specifically around affirmative action, and we did have this policy reviewed by the district's legal counsel, and the edits that you see in there are the recommendations from legal.
Thank you. And to also clarify, legal counsel was the one that approached the board and wanted to make the revisions to comply with, to comply with federal requirements.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Board questions? On this policy, there are a couple of revisions up there. It's attached to board docs. Anything that the board wants to discuss at this time? I don't see any discussion by the board at this time. Is the board okay in moving this to consent at a future? Okay. I've got the majority on the board out there. Okay. The last item on the non-action agenda is Mill levy override governance policy. So this one came in front of the board earlier for discussion, and Director Nelson, in collaboration with the Mill levy override oversight committee, presented information on this and proposed policy change, and Director Nelson and Director Art worked on this together. I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. X, and then I will come to Director Nelson for her comments as well.
Yeah, in your packet this evening is the draft of the policy, as well as some additional documentation that was provided by Director Nelson to support- to support the decision to put that policy into adoption. We also did move a sample of that into board docs and did code it appropriately as BDFM, so that will be where that will land in terms of the coding. And we did include a copy of that also in your packet.
Okay, Director Nelson.
Just wanted to spotlight really quickly the reason for the creation of this policy. Two reasons: governing documents in the district are board policy, and instead of having a governance plan out on its own tied to a committee, it's logical to bring the governance information into a policy. And then, second, the ballot questions, and there was an original spending plan that was mentioned in the ballot questions, stipulate requirements to manage the MLO funds, and they also provided directives for the Citizens Oversight Committee. This new policy just brings all of those requirements into one document now for easier reference. The content of the policy before you that was approved by the committee on April 15th is very much the same as what you saw at the work session. So, there was just some little tweaks that Director Art and I did with, you know, cleaning up language, those sorts of things. Director Art had some requests for a couple different things of adding language back that any amendments need to go through the DAC. And the committee had previously had a conversation around the purpose of having an MLO committee is to help oversee the funds. Why do we need approval from another committee on what one committee is wanting to do? And so, the committee still felt comfortable with maintaining the direction that we had already headed in. And so, as I said, much of the content remains similar to what you already saw. And I will turn it over to Mr. X, the Chair of the committee, to see if you have anything you would like to add.
I think the last time I was here in front of all of you wonderful people, I mentioned that it was way past my bedtime. Dr. Carey confirmed that again. And in fact, I told my wife I'm going to bring a sleeping bag with me tonight. But the committee did review the draft, and we did meet with both Director Nelson and Director Art in a meeting on April 15th, and the end result was the policy that you see in front of you. And this all started because we really didn't have direction. There were several different governance plans. There was a spending plan attached to the 2,000 Mill Levy. And so, we tried to get this all together into one that allows our committee, your committee, my committee as the Chair, to do bylaws and other documents to help run the committee, like developing an outline for the presenters that come in to talk about their program improvement plans and things like that, so that we can consolidate the time we spend on these improvement plans and give the committee time to also do the administrative work that has to be done as a committee.
Thank you, and I appreciate you staying well past your bedtime.
Oh, no, that's a joke. You know, I am a retired Army officer, and unlike the Air Force, I don't worry too much about telling.
It's well past my bedtime too, so. Director Art, you have anything to add because you worked with Director Nelson on this?
No, I think we're good. The policy certainly is hopefully going to give direction to the committee and set up the expectations that the board might hope for.
Okay, thank you. This is a new policy that is being added, so if the board is comfortable with it, we'll just bring this as an action item, just in case community members have any feedback that they want to provide as well. So, this will come as an action item at a future board meeting at this time. Okay, we are at the end of our board meeting and within our 11:00 PM deadline. Future agenda item request, board members, any future agenda item requests at this time. Okay, Director Nelson.
I would like to ask the board to consider bringing a few of our J-series policies to a work session. There could be some consolidation done, and so I would like to just get that on the docket.
Do you have a specific policy? Which one are you talking about under the J-series?
There's several that I think we could merge into one, so I don't have the... Can I get that to you in an email?
Sure, we can. We have a limited amount of time, just so the board is aware of it. We have a March 28th meeting, May 28th meeting. So, just to give the calendar review, next week, while we are at this, next week, we do not have a board meeting at this time. It's an open date. Administration is going to be in Denver for presentation to the Department of Education, State Department of Education, on Mitchell High School. So, board members, if you are interested in going up to Denver to support Superintendent Gall, we are more than welcome to, any board members, more than welcome to go there. He would give you, or the district can provide you the details. But there is no board meetings, board meeting next week. The following week is graduation week. I confirmed to the board that that week, we will have a meeting on the 21st, but that meeting will happen after the high school graduation that is scheduled for that evening. And the only item on the agenda is going to be the Superintendent End-of-Year Evaluation and possibly his future contract. It'll all come in executive session, and probably an hour and a half or two-hour conversation, depending on what it takes. That's the only item that is on 21st. 28th item, we are going to be considering all three of the charter schools that came and made a presentation. Each one of them is going to be extensive. We will also have a special meeting for the budget approval. There is a couple of other loose ends that need to be tied up. I can't remember everything. Chief Artmer, if you remember anything. But all I want to say is when we planned out the agenda, including policies that are already on the books, that policy review is also coming up. Some of the policies that the board wanted to discuss from the board retreat is going to come on the 28th. So, we will, you know, take this into consideration. Let me know what specific policy that you want to consider, Director Nelson. So, we have an idea, and then we'll try to schedule it. We have three meetings: 28th, a regular board meeting in the first week of June, and then a final meeting in the second week of June to wrap up things at this time.
So, do we need to take thumbs if the rest of the board is interested in adding it to the agenda, if at all possible?
Okay, sure, yeah.
I just asked if we need to take thumbs if the board is interested in adding this to the agenda in a future, if at all possible.
So, consolidating the J-series?
Consolidating policies.
Okay, so, you want this added before the, just to make sure that you want it added before we dismiss or before we break for the summer break? Is that the board directive?
Yes.
Okay. We have two meetings scheduled in June, the first week and the second week. The first week is a regular board meeting, and the second week is going to be a work session to wrap up things. And we just, and it could be also a special meeting that we do adopt some of the policies. So, it could be that if the board's bill is to consider other policies, the May 28th meeting could be a lengthy meeting, considering we have to review three charter school applications that comes in front of the board as well. Okay. Okay, reminders. I have some reminders here. Graduation speeches are due no later than March, May 16th. Is that right, Ms. Olson? Okay, the earlier the better for schools. Okay, and then board policy work. If any of you are working coordinate with Dr. X on it, so it is on the board agenda now tentatively for May 28th. Okay, at least initial draft versions. I've already reviewed the calendar for the rest of the school year at this time. Seeing no further business, if there are no objections, this meeting will adjourn at 10:52 PM. Thank you.